County Council meetings now in session. Once again, I have, you excuse me please, but per the fire marshal, I have to ask everybody standing along the walls to leave.
The walls are certificate people.
And if you are here to get a certificate, we'll kind of have you come up in the middle aisle, so just if you could just stand there and then we'll have you all circle back up in order, because we've got you in order and everything, but we have to follow the fire codes. That's what happens when you have a 60-year-old building that only seats about 30 in the council chambers. Thanks, sir. All of it. Saluda, that's the one Christie's got everybody upset about.
I didn't do anything.
We have in the past. That's where they were. That's where they were.
Fire marshal.
I had nothing to do with it.
I don't do anything.
I took that for you. I'm supposed to give the invocation, pledge of allegiance. So if you would, bow your heads with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for everyone's attendance at tonight's council meeting. Bless everyone with Christmas cheer and goodwill as we celebrate the birth of your Son. Lead our minds and hearts in your truth and guide this council's actions for the benefit of York County and our citizens. This council also recognizes the dangerous times we face, and we ask you to provide us with direction in protecting our citizens from Islamic terrorists and all other enemies of our sovereign nation. In your name, amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business before we get to all the people that helped us with the bond referendum is oath of office. As I call your name, would you come up with our attorney here, Michael Kendry? Sorry? That's, sir. Oh, okay, they're, they're going to try to see if there's a speaker that's turned off in the hallway, but let me go ahead and call for the oath of office. Got it? Okay. Bessie Meeks, Kathy Branton, Bill Hargrove, Carl Dix, Mary Ann Aberman.
I'd like to say, Sam, right there, and as I finish, if you have some word, you can proceed over to the dais that would be wonderful. I would say, we will honor, we will take the hand that we have for the council, to your count, if you would each raise your right hand and compete after me, I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state to exercise the duties of the office, which I have been appointed, and that I will, for the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States, so help me God. Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
This makes how it is.
Appreciate you serving.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you serving. Appreciate you serving. Appreciate it, sir. Yes, sir, appreciate it, sir. Oh, good, good.
Appreciate you serving.
Chet, if you could come forward. What we're going to do now is thank all the members of the bond referendum committee and all their hard work that was headed by Chet Miller. Of course, don't want to, Chet gave us a list of all the members of the committee, he left his own name off, so I wanted to make sure I hand you this certificate, but if you would, call their names up and then we'll have you come up and we'll hand you the certificate, and Chet, I'm going to put yours right here, so I don't have too many to keep up with.
I'll just come and get it. You want them to shake hands? Did you want them to go around to county council members also? Sure, that'd be nice, sure, council member call them. They're appreciated. All right, we'll start with Sheriff Bruce Frant, who helped us quite a bit with regard to speaking engagements and the support for it, so. Next is Ms. Kenny Christopher, she was loaned to us by Comporium. She ran our public relations and advertising within the group and had a subcommittee within the central committee. Next is Lou Aiken, senior management with Reinhardt Realty.
Thank you, good to see you again.
Lou Aiken, you have it there, Lou handled the T G K area and did quite a bit on the signs. Lou.
Is it everybody?
Next is Dan Baloo, attorney with Morton and Geddes, and Dan helped us quite a bit with fundraising and so on, thank you very much. Next, Jim Bradford, he was on the central committee also, was also co-chair of New York Committee. Jim's an attorney from here in New York. Get out of the way here, here, why don't I get over this side? This'll work, okay. Next is David Casey, oh, I'm sorry, James Britton, James, I'm sorry, I got it mixed up. James Britton, who helped us quite a bit with regard to presentations. Next, David Casey is a senior executive with Family Trust, did quite a bit on fundraising as part of the central committee. Sig Hewitt is still coming in from overseas, so evidently his flight is not here yet. Here's a guy who really did quite a bit. I said to him a number of times, 250%, actually it'd be 400, this is Manny Kimmel. Manny really went all out for us and worked quite a bit. He did quite a bit, he kept me off the radio, I didn't have to get on it.
Don't let him fool you.
Steve Love was the other co-chair with the York group, but also part of the central committee. He's very active here in York and N W A C P. Steve? Next is Helena Miller, she's on the Rock Hill School Board, and Helena did a lot, in fact, we got her son doing a lot of work on modification of signs. Next is Sean Parker, I think I drove her nuts a few times with continuing changes on presentations, but she came through like a champ and did probably about 70 or 80 of them, if you just go that way there. Melvin Poole, worked at Rock Hill, also worked on Get Out the Boat, and also part of N W A C P activities, and did quite a bit on, Melvin, come on, Brad, on speaking engagements for us. Next, Mary Seek, is an agent with Reinhardt Realty, did quite a bit up in the Lake Wally area. In fact, this way here, Mary? They had a 60% approval rating here. Jim Byning, who's chairman of the Rock Hill School District, is involved, I don't think Jim ever wants me to call again about putting up signs or taking down signs anymore. Chris Whitley, he worked with us quite a bit on all the tours and setting up the syllabus.
Thanks, Chris.
Kevin Brackett, our solicitor, Kevin really went all out with us and did quite a bit on speaking engagements with us and support for the whole operation.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it.
And David Hamilton, clerk of the court, David really went out of the way scheduling us in there for various tours and so on, and worked quite a bit on the speaking. Chamber of Presidents, is Angela Megley here? I didn't see her. From the Clover Chamber. Paul Boger, though, Paul Boger from the York Chamber. Paul in the facilities over there for all the, all the meetings and so on, appreciate it. I don't think I have Amy Hayes or Eileen here, so you can drop both those, this hand is over. I didn't see Wes or Paul, is Paul and Draco here? Paul, oh, there he is. Thanks a lot. Paul was a big support for us up in the Lake Wally area and all. Okay, within some of the subcommittees now, Karen Allen, I know she's here, I saw her. Karen? Karen, straight on down. Karen worked quite a bit on Get Out the Boat, just go out all around if you would, Karen.
I didn't see Ronnie Bales.
Oh, he told me he might be late, so wouldn't, oh, Ronnie made it, okay.
Ronnie Bales is on his way.
I see what he did, Ronnie Bales has a men's shop and did quite a bit on the financial, come on down, Ronnie, on getting the finances for this. Thanks a lot, guys. Reverend Carlton Brown, minister, he worked quite a bit on Get Out the Boat. Thanks a lot, Paul. Is Lily Duncan here? Oh, I'm sorry, David Cobb was next.
David Cobb?
I didn't see Lily. No, and I don't think Lily's here. Larry Earl, he's here. Larry worked quite a bit on Get Out the Boat, he was part of the York Subcommittee, thank you. Beth Faulkner? I don't, I didn't see Beth. Is Chris Faulkner here? I didn't see him either, okay. Paul Finnegan, did he make it? Oh, there he is. I did see you out there. Paul did quite a bit, he let us use the Sylvia Theater a number of times, and really appreciate everything you did, just go around it. It really appreciates all the effort he did with the Sylvia Theater. Jean Gollan, I know Jean's here. He did the public relations. Jean, thanks a lot. Jane Kefield, I know you're here, Jane. Jane did quite a bit on the.
Thank you very much.
Gary Groos. Gary's a retired contractor. He did planning and all the expense stakes. This guy here doesn't need any introduction, just come on down.
Robert going to get in a cane.
I said this guy doesn't need any introduction. Mayor of York. His group came out and endorsed the whole program, so appreciate everything you did.
John Love, retiree.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Former student, good to see you.
John, thanks a lot, fellow. Is Velma Love here? Velma Love? I didn't see her, no. Mary McCorkle? Mary's a local artist here, and she also worked very heavily on Get Out the Boat. Hey, thank you. Steve McCray, attorney, and he worked the finances. Steve, thanks, guy, appreciate it. Kim Merritt, is Kim Merritt back here? I didn't see Ken. Ruth Queen, no, she's here. Ruth also worked at Get Out the Boat.
Thank you so much.
Ruth, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Jan Ramsey? Jan also worked on Get Out the Boat.
That's what we hear from them.
Thank you very much.
Joyce Sanders?
Nice to meet you.
Ruth also worked at Get Out the Boat. This guy doesn't need any introduction, come on down, John, John Shiflett is on the York City Council. Thanks a lot, fellow. Phyllis Ward, I've known Phyllis now for, what, 13 years, I guess? We got back quite a ways. Guess what, Ward, happy to have you down with us, ever. Okay, Phyllis, no, no, come on around, thanks, sir.
We don't need a certificate to know you, we appreciate you.
Okay, Susie Whitesides, Atkins now, she has got married, congratulations. Okay, some of the special groups and the subgroup, there's Ron Duratt, from up at Lake Wally. Ron, thanks a lot, appreciate everything you did. Is Tom Smith here?
I didn't see Tom at all, he was one of the ones, okay?
Okay, this is special mention of people. Okay, next is Representative Ray Felder. Ray helped us out quite a bit in Fort Mill area, in fact, quite pleased they ended up 60% approval rating. Ray, thanks. Next is one who lent us a truck a number of times, Will Huff, one of the neighbors that, we used his truck a lot of times, putting up signs, taking down signs, and so on, so Will Huff.
I was able to.
I've done it before, I've done it before.
At last, is Dr. Bobby Walker. Everybody wonder where all the signs came from, we had them stored in his barn down in southern part of the county, and also, we had the, all the poles we got from him. I don't know where they came from.
Let me point out Chet Miller, too, for all his hard work, he was kind of the leader, so.
There's a couple of people I'd like to recognize, Arthur Black, who's also part of this, Dr. Margaret Blackwell, who's out of town holidays, Cynthia Bradford, Susan Broadfield, the chamber president for Lake Wally, David Duncan, who helped quite a bit, he was with all the tours of the facilities, Dr. Greg Reiner, right here, Daniel Hartshaw, an attorney, Tiffany Love, also an attorney, Josie Lowery, who is a teacher, Pam Morrell from Realtor uptown, she did quite a bit on fundraising, Representative Ralph Norman, who had to stay down in Columbia for the night, the other one who helped us out quite a bit at Farmer's Exchange, Brian Poe, who loaned us all the steel poles that we used to put the signs up with, Donna Pontus with the Herald, did a lot of advertising layouts for us, Representative Tommy Pope, who also was not able to attend, and Reverend Priscilla Ross. The others, Rena Strawhorn from out here, a retiree, Gary Williams, Williams and Fudge, who helped out quite a bit, especially on fundraising, Wayne Wing, the same, from up at Rock Hill, and the other chamber president, Rob Youngblood, who lent us all the facilities to endorse the program. That's all I have to say, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Let everybody shake hands. And Bill, did you, did you want to introduce our new staff?
It is my privilege to introduce to you Brooke Beatty, she is our new Public Information Officer, she comes to us from the United States Air Force, so I'm pleased with that. She was a First Lieutenant in the Air Force, and she worked in public affairs, which is media stuff, and would you like to say something for a couple of seconds?
Sure, hi, it's nice to meet you all. I was a public affairs officer in the Air Force, before that, I was actually a journalist, and I come from Ohio, so I am a Yankee, and I hope you won't hold that against me, but I'm really excited to be here and work with you all.
We're glad to have you. Thank you, ma'am.
Media stuff.
Okay, next person's Tommy. There you are. Yeah, let the audio people fix that.
Okay. Once again, thank you for the invitation to speak. I'm actually not going to start the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to my partner, Patrick White, and then I'll jump back in.
Yes, sir. Welcome, Patrick. Patrick's chairman of the Fort Mill School Board.
Patrick White, I live at 205 Old Springs Road in Fort Mill, and we appreciate this time tonight to go over our proposal. I know some of you have seen it at different times, but I think this is the culmination of several months of planning and preparing for this, so hopefully you get all the information that you need tonight. One of the first things I want to do to start off with was to kind of give you a little bit of information as far as timeline, it's a little unorthodox for a school district to be in the tourism business, so I think it's important for us to kind of set the stage of how we got from a piece of land to where we are today. In 2012, we started looking for a school site, this was right before we did our bond referendum, when we were going to expand our two existing high schools, and as part of expanding Fort Mill High School, we needed to replace Riverview Elementary, and to do that, we needed a new site, so we found a school site on Sprat Street. By August, we had signed a contract for that site, but it was 56 acres, and if you've been into Fort Mill lately, the Riverview Elementary School is on the left-hand side when you come into town, you'll, you'll see the retaining walls, there's fields there, and then the schools right after that. We just felt, the board at that time, we only needed about 35, 32 acres, but with it being contiguous all in one spot, we felt it was the best thing to do for the district to go ahead and purchase all of that property. We closed on it in December, and then in February of 2013, we had already had planned what we were going to do as far as the school was going, but we said, we've got 25 acres, you know, we don't need the property as far as our athletic facilities, because we have those that are mainly our middle schools and our high schools, so we started reaching out to folks, saying, you know, what can we do to partner on this? At that time, we had right at $3.2 million of investment, if you looked at the price of the land, when we started clearing that site, we did all the site work at one time, it just made more sense to do the site work at once instead of doing it in two pieces. So between the land and the improvements we made, we had about $3.2 million of investment, and at that time, since it was in the town of Fort Mill, we were asking if they were interested for recreational purposes to go in and do the final topping or dressing of the fields, complete them, and then build some type of a central structure, which we had estimated to be around $1.3 million. From March to September of the next year, we continued to talk off and on, but at that time, Fort Mill had real limited funds as far as what they could do to do the $1.3 million, and didn't have much bonding authority either. So, and June 7th, I think that's an important date, that was when the developer of the Waterside development, over 1,500 homes, they came to the town of Fort Mill and offered, I'm not exactly sure, Mayor Lex Savage is in the back, how many acres? So the developer of Waterside offered over 25 acres, and that's where they're doing to take care of their recreational needs down on the river. So finally, in September of that year, we met again, we discussed the fact that, at that time, it just didn't make sense, they didn't, they had property, they didn't have funds to do anything on our property, and we didn't have the funds either, so we started talking about whether there are other partnerships, and at that time, we were thinking that there might be some of the soccer clubs, the lacrosse clubs, that would be interested in coming out and finishing the fields and using those for practice, but at that time, we were looking, mainly these investments were for grass-type fields, that would mainly be for a practice or limited games on the weekend. And that led us, on October 5th, that's when we began discussions with the CVB on what it would take to do an H-tax proposal, that really wasn't on our radar, but once we met with Alvis Cole and his team, it certainly became clear that that was a possibility for this land. The other thing, and I'll turn it back over to Tommy, but I'd like to recognize, Mayor Lex Savage is here tonight, as well as now manager Dennis Peaper, talked at length to Gwen about this project, and we feel like there's some unique opportunities for partnership between the district, between the town of Fort Mill, as we move forward.
So why are we here? I'm speaking on behalf of all soccer and lacrosse parents, I'm one of them. If you've ever attended a tournament, you understand the amount of money that's spent at these venues. Our goal is to create a premier, multipurpose athletic field complex here in York County, for the purpose of generating funds. We consider the RAC, we call that the Riverview Athletic Complex, to be a spotlight destination for hosting state, regional, and national tournaments. It will consist of four light artificial turf fields, the dimensions are 75 by 120, and 65 by 110, and those are important, we met with Alvis Cole before designing this complex, to get the best fields to generate the most tournaments, and he said, these are the sizes that you should build. It's in close proximity to the I-77 corridor, in conjunction with Manchester Meadows and our local high school turf fields, we like to create an all-weather tournament destination. We'll feature a customized kiosk that will advertise to all our guests that come to the RAC, area restaurants, and local entertainment venues within the county H-tax district. We've already met with some of these, they're excited about the opportunity to post and advertise there. We're minutes from York County hotels, some of them quite new, over 140 local restaurants, shopping, entertainment, Kerry Winds, and the Riverwalk. We already have pledged support from local soccer, lacrosse clubs, we have an agreement to host a southeast regional girls' lacrosse tournament, we also like to be used as overflow fields for soccer tournaments at Manchester Meadows, State Line, and also Charlotte area clubs. We recently hired an in-house facility management facilitator, Tamara Osborne, who's also here, thank you, Tamara. She'll be completely in charge of marketing this field, upkeep, management with our in-house management team. As you all already know, we agreed to a memo of understanding to York County and the town of Fort Mill, and other entities stating 100% availability with advance notice for any tournament play that promotes tourism, and exclusive weekend/summer use for tourism-related activities. In our application, we were asked to note other similar projects, we like to point out two local ones, Cherry Park, Manchester Meadows. This has been an identified need. advertise there. We're minutes from York County hotels, some of them quite new, over 140 local restaurants, shopping, entertainment, Carrawayns, and the Riverwalk. We already have pledged support from local soccer, lacrosse clubs. We have an agreement to host a Southeast Regional Girls Lacrosse Tournament. We also like to be used as overflow fields for soccer tournaments at Manchester Meadows, State Line, and also Charlotte area clubs. We recently hired an in-house facility management facilitator, Tamara Osborne, who's also here. Thank you, Tamara. She'll be completely in charge of marketing this field, upkeep, management with our in-house management team. As you all already know, we agreed to a memo of understanding to York County and the town of Fort Mill and other entities stating 100% availability with advance notice for any tournament play that promotes tourism, and exclusive weekend/summer use for tourism-related In our application, we were asked to note other similar projects. We like to point out two local ones, Cherry Park, Manchester Meadows. This has been an identified need, multipurpose fields for tourism has been identified by numerous local and state surveys as one of the top needs for York County. We believe its effective use of the land, as Patrick White has talked about, it does build a sense of community, and it attracts tourism and also new businesses. Some of the details at a glance, and then Patrick's going to go through the numbers a little more concretely. The total cost of the project is $6,400,000. We're funding $3,225, we're asking for and requesting from H-Tax is $3,200,000. Using the data provided by Alvis Cole and his team, we looked at the first three years of impact when it comes to overall tourism revenue. He said we can expect 75,873 estimated tourists in the first three years, and equates that to year one of $2 million, year two of $3 million, year three of $3.5 million tourism dollars, for a total of $8.5 million in the first three years, and Patrick White will explain that.
When we think about the areas in the Fort Mill area where these folks are going to be either staying, or dining, or being entertained, obviously, the first three that come to mind are everything in the Baxter Village that's in the H-Tax district for the county. And we've got on there Exit 90, Carrawayns Exit, as well as Exit 85, but I think it's important to point out, kind of after the fact, Exit 88, I think tonight, y'all are, I think that might be on your agenda at some point in time as far as planning commission, as far as the Cato property, so that's obviously another big exit for this project. But Alvis, and I think Alvis is actually here tonight as well, he's been an invaluable source, because we didn't know what the numbers were, and we didn't even know if this project made sense. So Tommy and Alvis have met several times to try to determine what is the financial impact of tourism. I won't go through every number on here, and as we get through the other sheets, and you've got this in your packet, I'm going to highlight basically what we feel like is worst case, and there's some other cases in here. But if you look at a 50-team tournament, 15 players per team, there's about $34 per day. Bottom line, for those, for that tournament, you'd have 26, 35 participants, or a total spend per day of $179,000. Obviously, these folks are going to be coming from out of town. If you don't have kids, or if you don't know of kids and families that are involved in this type of tourism, talk to some of them and ask them. I've got a good friend who has two kids that are on travel soccer teams, and every weekend I call him, seems like he's in Sumter, his wife's in Charleston, the next day they flop, they're spending multiple hotel nights. So if you add the hotel night piece to it, for the, if we only did tournaments half the time, that would add an additional $100,000, $500,000. So depending on whether you're looking at 75% occupancy and 75% of the weekends occupied, it would be a high of 331, but for this exercise, we're going with the low number of $279,000 per day per tournament. And that's considering you do 26 weekends a year, and only 50% of the families are going to need a hotel room. So if you start looking at the projections as far as the overall impact, if you go through and look at these, there's a, the 75% is 3.8, only 50% lodging is 2.6, but then if you look at the 50% numbers, on 50% of the total weekends, which I said was, again, was the worst-case scenario, you're looking at about $7.3 million of economic impact based on these fields, and that's an annual impact. The one thing that we tried to do was, and we had some questions, I think the finance committee was, you know, how much of this impact is going to be in the H-Tax district? You know, it's hard to know exactly what that number is. I mean, how many are going to stay in Rock Hill, how many are going to eat at a TKK restaurant, how many are going to be in Fort Mill versus how many are going to be at those corridors that we looked at? So the numbers we picked, we felt were pretty low. We said only 30% of that spend would be in the county's H-Tax district. So if you only look at 30%, you're talking about $2.2 million of economic impact annually. The next thing that we wanted to look at was, what does that do for H-Tax collections? Again, there's four different scenarios. Best case would be an additional $78,000 a year, when you take the 2% on that economic impact. Worst case would be $44,000. One other thing that we wanted to answer, we had some questions about, you know, why did the district, what were we putting into this? As we showed on a previous slide, we've already done $3.2 million of investment with the land and the improvements we made on the land, and right now, even though we just passed a $226 million bond referendum, if you look, these are the projects that we had planned, just like the county just got through doing a bond referendum, and you had designated projects that you're going to spend money on, this is what that is for. And as far as questions of what are the taxpayers doing in the school district, you know, part of this, the Aquatic Center, the $9.9 million, our citizens have already voted to invest in some of the recreation side of the district. Just to close, this is a picture, this is exactly what the site looks like today. I'm not sure if I've got a pointer on here or not. Yep. The school site sits here, this is the major area for the fields. There would be three international-sized fields here, and then there's one that sits back on this pad here. When we built the school, we went ahead and invested, we did $200,000 additional parking here that we didn't need. This is where everything would basically go. There's, the roads through here are double-wide so that we could do concessions, either day-of type concessions, food trucks, and then this would also include some type of a central structure that would be bathroom facility, storage, press box type. The other thing that will happen is when Fort Mill Parkway is rerouted, we have a claim on this corner, so that that'll be additional parking as you come into the town of Fort Mill, that little triangle piece right there will be parking for the fields as well. What we're asking is, we feel like the school district had pretty good vision to buy this site, to get it to where it is today, and we're just asking for your help to get it to the next phase. We think it's a good project for the citizens of our school district, as well as everybody in York County. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next person's Ryan from Lake Wylie, up right in front of me.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank, in the spirit of thanks and recognition today, County Council for your service and for the opportunity to stand before you and make this presentation and request your assistance with the funding on this project. Okay? Okay, thank you. I'd also like to thank Karen, I'd like to thank Beth Latham for helping us with some financial figures. Members of our committee, here today with me is Kim Trainer, Perry Johnson, also Alvis Cole from York County CVB. I'd like to thank Watts Huckabee and the Hospitality Tax Committee as well, and also Chet Miller for what he did with the bond referendum, and we hope to work with Chet in the near future. So, a little history, 11 years ago, and three different county council members have contributed to this project. There's been land use, grants, agreements on the 50 acres and the additional 18 acres. I represent Lake Wylie Athletic Association and the York County Sports Complex Planning Committee that was formed earlier this year to try and put this together, take advantage of the hospitality tax funds available for capital, and put this presentation together and get this going. The land has been in the area for a while, it's been available. What you're seeing there is the bulk of the property, 50 acres with three multipurpose soccer fields, about 480 parking spaces, three softball, baseball fields, press towers, the red dot in the middle, playground, walking trails, extra bathrooms and concessions, and recently, a disc golf course has been added to the perimeter. Location is in the lower-left corner there, what you see on the right is Highway 274 and 49, just below that is Highway 55, at the Five Points area. The school that you can see looks like a spider there, in the middle is Crowder's Creek Elementary School, where we use the facilities there for recreational athletics. To the north of that, the red dot represents the YMCA, and the field that they're going to build behind that with our assistance as well, they're going to grade the property and give us the opportunity to develop that field as well. And the development is Paddler's Cove, a crescent property, that are all the different colors there in different phases, with the possible connection to the west of that diagram to Bethel School Road. So since it was introduced to Lake Wylie Athletic Association as a management association, we've gathered together, Lake Wylie's been in existence for over seven years, operating recreational sports to approximately 1,000 families in Lake Wylie season-on-season for the past seven years. Profitable, operating, 501(c)(3) organization. The plan in the beginning is to have Lake Wylie manage the property, hire a full-time park manager, over time, transition to a York County, a park management organization and a body, because Lake Wylie Athletic Association is in the business of providing recreation, not managing parks, but that can go through time. We're going to talk a little bit about a special use tax, which is above and beyond what we're asking for from the hospitality tax, so there's going to be a governance board there. The usage plan is that weekdays, we encourage weeknight games from different leagues to bring, especially from organizations that play outside, outside the area, to bring hospitality into the area, and available for play, paid to train, or pay for usage during the week by different clubs that have approached us that would use this, some of the same organizations Tommy was talking about. Weekends are all dedicated tournament play, generate tourism, pay-to-play, there's, I'll mention a couple more in a couple different slides of the different organizations that we have. And here they are, we've partnered with all these organizations, I don't need to go down them, but 30, sorry, 40 different baseball-type softball events on those three baseball fields. Discoveries has offered us, like they've worked with Tommy, on the RAC for three, Overflow at three different tournaments, two in the fall, one in the spring. Our Division II football has offered to pay to use it for home games, and run a tournament at the end of the year. Clover Lacrosse, working with Performance Edge, has offered and agreed to work two tournaments per year. Lake Wylie Soccer would run four events. I didn't mention there, Lake Wylie Baseball would also run events, but they do it through Crystal Carolina. South Carolina Youth Soccer, anytime there's a field available on those multipurpose, they'll be using it for PMSL games and Sand Lapper games that bring tourism from all the different parts of the upstate, all the way down to Columbia, teams that are coming to play with our local soccer clubs. 3v3 World Football Tour has offered six events to start, I'm sure they want to have more. The Flying Discs Organization, Anova, a local organization here, has offered to bring two tournaments, along with other events for discs, disc golf, and they have given us their plans of what they would do to build around the outside. We have enough money, they've barely asked for clearing trees here and there, so we have enough money in our budget to give them what they need, to make that 18-hole disc golf course around the perimeter. And we've also partnered with Tommy and talked about, and Alvis Cole and the CVB, about events that we could possibly host with the, between us and the RAC. Thanks to Kim Trainer and our advancement team, we've visited 100 businesses in Lake Wylie that have all given us their support, not in incremental amounts, but support with build and support with ongoing sponsorship. We're close with the Lake Wylie Chamber, and as I mentioned, Alvis Cole and the York County CVB. So without adding fiscal information to this, I mentioned all the different events, we did some rough math on how many, based on the numbers I showed you for tournaments, how many players, how many teams, sorry, teams, players and families would actually be using the park, and this is over a calendar year, we've had to push back our time, so this would be numbers over a calendar year, not necessarily 2017, because we're not going to be open until probably the end of 2017. The features have changed over the life of the project. The initial design, in a study done by Keckenwood, the architectural said it would be an $8.5 million park, and that was with all surfaces except for the outfields on the baseball fields, softball fields, as synthetic surfaces. So you'd have synthetic infield's and synthetic multipurpose fields with grass outfield's. As we adjusted, when we made our original proposition to the Hospitality Tax Committee and the Finance and Operations Team, we adjusted it down to be purely game-ready, which means fields and bathrooms, basically. We got that down to $4.9 million. What we removed is what's in the right box that we think over time could have been added, we could have added lights, we could have added walking trails and the other things. The other amenities that there are listed on the right, all those add up to be about $2 million. We did originally remove 1.6 million, which made the full park with the $2 million extra amenities, a $6.9 million park. What we're going to do now is, we're going to go back to the original design. We did find ways to cut off about half a million from the original, we've increased contingency, we have budgeted in the cost of what we need to finish the architecturals, which is the engineering study, and we're no longer seeking the $2 million from fundraising. So what it comes down to is, the Finance and Operations Committee has made a recommendation to County Council after our presentations and studies of a $2.45 million grant of hospitality tax, which leaves us with approximately $5.6 to $6 million to finish the design. What we're going to do is put this back in terms of a special use tax to the residents of the Lake Wylie area, or the overlay of the Bethel School, Bethel Fire District tax, where we will put the emphasis, or the decision back to the residents of Lake Wylie, is if they want this park, they're going to have to pay some tax. The average tax on the $6 million bond that we would have to finish the park, the features of the park would be about $28 annually for properties assessed up to $250,000, more for businesses and less for smaller properties or less assessed. We are allocating $350,000 for operations, that's a little more than we need, but we're also, through the guidance of our committee, setting aside for funds for enhancements to the park, refurbishing of the fields over the 10- or 15-year timeframe, and future parks and recreation in the Lake Wylie area, which may include the property that's set aside from Duke Power on the Allison Creek project. The average household or assessment up to $250,000 would be about $14 a year on that, so combined, $42 a year annual tax burden on the residents, and only the residents of Lake Wylie. So what we come down to is that, hopefully with the assistance and the success that Chet Miller has done with bonding, to help us get through this, we're embarking on this journey of petitioning ourselves and bringing forth to council a special use tax, which would overlay similar to what the Fire District tax has done in the past. Where we'd be asking for, what I said before, was a $10 million bond over, a $6 million bond over 10 years, 350K in operating expenses. The timeline, just moving forward, that's a light picture that I found in the Fire District documents of where the borders would be, the lake on the right, the North Carolina State Line on the top, and if you know the area, the Param Road, approximately Param Road to the west border and the Rock Hill border, I believe on the south border. So we've got a little bit of work ahead of us to do petitions, I believe we have to get 15% of signatures in the district, and once we do that, and this is just me trying to understand the process, but bringing forth a vote to council to say, can we put a vote in front of our residents, to put to them, do they want to invest in the $6 million in the operating expenses to have this park in their area? If all goes well, sometime in the late second quarter, we could have a vote. What we would like, at that time, we would come back, if we do get a positive vote, we come back to this board, this council, and say, could we begin to use the $245,000 to break ground as soon as possible? And then, I'm guided by Beth Latham, that it would take some time to collect the tax, and then we wouldn't be able to bond in probably till 2017, so that puts out the timeline, to secure bond funding, begin construction, and possibly get games-ready, possibly 2017 in September. So, we started the, this mission with tourism, right? Because tournaments are generating tourism, much like Tommy and his group said. We can prove the tourism, we have the partnerships, we definitely have the interest in the area. I close my statements by saying tourism generates revenue, so I ask for your vote, I ask for your vote in favor of this, and we're here to support from both Lake Wylie Athletic Association, the residents of Lake Wylie area, and if those people feel this is a very important park complex to have, they'll put their vote forth, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Chapel? Earlwood? Oh, where, oh, okay.
I, I close my statements by saying tourism generates revenue. So I ask for your vote, I ask for your vote in favor of this, and we're here to support from both Lake Wiley Athletic Association, the residents of Lake Wiley area, and if those people feel this is a very important park complex to have, they'll put their, they'll put their vote forth. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Chapel? Earlwood? Oh, where, oh, okay.
I got some questions later.
Yeah, sir.
I'm Earlwood Chapel, as you know.
Absolutely.
And I come before you tonight very humbly. I live down on 940 East Chapel Road, down in the Black Jack section near the Chester County line. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight. I humbly appear here. I've seen a lot of things, I've talked to a lot of people, I have people call me. I speak to you about the Middle Eastern that want to come into York County. I'm only telling you what I hear from your, your constituency and those I used to represent, Ms. Cox. Very, very informed people, high on the list of moral principle and character that I've talked to. I'm about to turn 87 in a few months, and people, like I say, still call me to see what's going on. But I want you and the audience to know, as I said before, if anyone has any more faults than I do, they're making time somewhere. But being honest, open and above board and truthful and fair, I don't have any problem. I live, as my daddy taught me, to live where I don't have to kiss behind or apologize to any man. That's my moral principle and character. That's how I served here. And I speak to a final body of council members, the citizens up there at TV and sitting behind me that probably that any council member ever retired and left on your council. I'm real proud to have known and served with them. And due to these calling, people calling me and the caliber of people they are, I speak to you tonight. Mr. Chairman, I want to commend you for your leadership and in this particular manner, and Mr. Henderson for speaking up early on about this situation. The reason we get into trouble is we don't start soon enough preparing to prevent it or stop it. Or, as my dad said in World War II, he has a brother laying in Flanders land in France tonight from World War I. His only brother. Said you don't prepare for a rainy day soon enough. You don't prevent your future trouble. I think sometime he was very right. The question on taking in these new Middle Easterns and how you will handle this allows me, from what I know about your approach so far, Mr. Chairman and council members that I've talked to, I say thank you, Mr. Chairman and the council. I hope I'm right about the decision I make from my friends that have called me, 42 of them, uh-uh, I call 42 and 21 call me about this particular fact subject to night. Remember, if we keep on being fooled by letting people keep coming here across the border, the southern border, by the millions upon millions, then we start taking the new ones from the Middle East, we will be known by our children and grandkids and the whole world will say. America, one of the greatest nations in the world, was destroyed from within. And let me repeat that. If we keep on the trend we're going and the mindset that we're being governed under, one of these days, someone will remind our children that America, one of the greatest nations in the world, was destroyed from within. And I'm sure we all see on TV what can and is happening, and if we let that crowd in here from the Middle East, it's going to get worse, in my belief. You know, council, we took an oath of office here. I took it 22 times, on 11 times in the 22 years, and I said with my right hand raised, that I will protect and uphold the laws of this state and of the United States, so help me God. And when you took that oath of office, you didn't tell the people that you're going to let somebody come next door to them that's got the record of probably destroying, killing and murder. People that can't stay in their own country and straighten it out wants to come here and use what our forefathers lay in a mini grave across York County and South Carolina to defend from the same type enemy that we are letting, are willing to open our gates for. We sure don't know that I'm not right. Other places they go into, including America, they prove that I'm right. Now folks, we even take an oath of office, I mean, we even take a swear that we, the laws and the bills you pass and the ordinances you pass, that, that you do it for the well-being, the welfare, the health and the happiness and the safety of its citizens. Every bill they pass here on that seat, I did it for 22 years. And I don't want you to do something that, that don't have to be done, and we don't owe them anything. We'll take up all kind of aid to them and help feed them and the over there Americans and all different socials over there by the thousands now are rendering a service to them. I wonder sometime if this isn't an act to really just bring them here to us. So now I'm finished. I've said all I can say to convince you to don't bring them down to, next to my house or my neighbor's house or your house. And I'll tell you this to your face, it's not a one of you would take them into your home, six or eight or 10, not a one of you. Guess you're going to stick them down next to some of our homes. And I just want you to be fair about it. And Mr. Chairman, what I hear about you and your approach is unsurpassed during the years that I sat up there with you and this, this particular incident. If it's true what I hear from a lot of you, if you take this the way I hear you're going to handle it, I'm going to be more proud of you than I am. So now I want to say to the monument, the boss man, his staff, and to this council, to the citizens here tonight and the citizens on that TV, I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Earlwood. Appreciate it. Next, actually two people, Michael Reed and William Carter. Other gentleman here?
Is William Carter right there? He comes in, he can start.
Okay.
My name is Michael Reed. I've appeared before you before, and I appreciate you giving me another chance to talk to you.
Yes, sir.
Today is, is December 7th. Traditionally, that's known as Pearl Harbor Day. And Pearl Harbor Day is forever known and remembered as the day that America was sucker Quite honestly, we took a big sucker punch in the belly to get a lot of folk woken up as to what was really going on. And council members, we cannot afford another sucker punch in this state or in this country. Islam has declared a holy war against us. For many years, they have called us the great Satan, and they will overtake us if we let We've got to stop them at every corner and every entry, including refugee resettlement. Enemies of this country are using supposed Christian charity organizations and groups to slip in those who hate us under cover of darkness. They have done anything they can to get people to cooperate with them, to allow these insurgents to enter and to create pandemonium into our country and all Western Christian nations. I think we can witness Europe. It was once a great civilization, but now take a look at it. It's been wasted in almost every single way. The society that had security and safety for their people, that's been destroyed. Women over there are afraid to walk on the streets in the daytime, much less at night. The Mujahideen Muslims have said that they want to cause terror in the hearts of Americans, Canadians and Europeans. And they say that the Muslim people love death more than we love life, because they're willing to die for what they believe. Muslims everywhere across the whole Middle Eastern and African region are claiming to be refugees now, and they have identified terrorists who are coming from Bosnia and Kuwait, from Uzbekistan, Ghana, Kazakhstan, Morocco, Iraq, Iran, Somalia, and a lot of other places, along with Syria. And they're obtaining forged documents, and you can find the proof of that in newspapers in, in Europe. We should ask ourselves, well, why aren't those Muslim countries over there where they live around them? Why aren't they taking those people in? Well, the reason they give is they're afraid there might be terrorists among them. I think that we should be asking the same question. Why should we take them in? Meanwhile, legitimate Syrian refugees never make it to the UN refugee camps because the Sunni Muslims that are there in those large camps brutalize them and rape them and murder This past week, we witnessed a man and a woman murder 14 people in California. The woman was vetted by the process that's used by the FBI, the Department of Homeland Security. She was vetted by them. Okay, come on in. If they cannot screen out one Pakistani Muslim woman who has just murdered somebody's father, mother, brother, sister, uncle, aunt, if they can't screen out one, what makes us think that they can screen out thousands who are going to be coming into this country, who they want to come into this country? It can't happen. It won't happen. They don't have the manpower and they don't have the money. That's exactly what the FBI director said this past Friday. So once again, we have proof that those who practice Islam are a state and a national security threat, regardless of where they're born or where they come from. The man was born in this country, raised in a Muslim home, and, and don't get me wrong, I don't have anything particularly against them, but I recognize the problem when we, when we have one in front of us. The man was born in America. He's a US citizen, but because of what he practices, he went out and murdered his fellow citizens. That's not what Americans do, that's what terrorist groups do. Islamic culture will not allow those of us who practice Christianity to be, to be at peace here for very long, considering the noticeably increased terrorist activity taking place in this country and around the world. Recently, the president of Turkey said, there is no moderate Islam, there is no extremist Islam, there is only Islam. Islam is Islam. I'm here to ask you tonight if you will please craft a resolution and call for a vote at this council meeting to forbid Islamic Muslim refugees from anywhere in the world from entering York County. Syrian refugees are not the issue. Issue is Islam and its insurgency into this country and in this state, and all Muslims who practice Islam and the danger it presents to all of us who live here in this state. With that, I'll give you William Carter.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak.
Yes, sir.
This is my third chance that I've had, and I really appreciate that opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Adolf Hitler said, the bigger a lie is, the more that it'll be believed. Lenin said, a lie stated often enough becomes the truth. I'm here tonight to tell you that it is a lie that the Muslim faith is a faith of peace. And I'm going to back up my statements. On the Bill Bennett Show this morning, as an example, it was brought out that 80% of Muslims, not jihadists, but Muslims, believe that it's okay to stone a woman caught in an act of adultery. This is the year 2015. More than 80% of Muslims agree that if a person converts from Islam to another religion, that it's okay to kill that person. In Scotland today, there are hundreds of cases of Muslim women who have been murdered, and Scotland Yard is investigating if they've been murdered by their own family. Is this what we want to bring to York County? All Muslims are not jihadists, and I'm not here to convict all Muslims, but all jihadists are Muslims, okay? Your loyalty must be to the people of York County. Your consideration and all your work must be for their benefit, okay? Not to make profit for World Relief, the organization that will make profit, a contract organization for bringing people into this country. Not to the US Chambers of Commerce that have endorsed and onboard with the Muslim migration. And not to the Middle Eastern people. Your loyalty must be to the common people of York County, who are not here tonight because they're working, they're tired, they worked all day and they got to go to bed early and get ready to get, to go to work tomorrow morning. Those are the people that you must focus on when you make your decision on this Syrian problem, okay, and this refugee influx. I have personally nothing against anybody, any Muslim or anybody else. I believe people of all faiths should have the freedom to practice their religion, but the events in California and in Paris show that if we allow a large influx of these people, we're playing with fire. Briefly, German newspaper in Germany stated, "The behavior of these migrants, delinquents used towards the police officers can be characterized as aggressive, disrespectful and condescending." In Berlin, dozens of Arab clans hold reign over the city's criminal underworld. Asylum seekers are driving a surge of violent crime in cities all across Germany. According to the president of the German Police Union in Berlin, police hardly dare to stop a car in certain neighborhoods because they know they'll be surrounded by 40 or 50 migrant men. The current spike in crime, including rapes, sexual and physical assaults, stabbings, home invasions, robberies, burglaries and drug trafficking comes amidst a record-breaking influx of refugees from Africa, Asia, Middle East and Western Balkans. Protect the people of York County. We can help these people through a myriad of other programs, but your goal must be to protect our people, and I beg you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Okay, our next order of business is the public forum session where people signed up to speak. Remember, you only have two minutes, so just remember, I have to give you two minutes in fairness to the other people, because it's only a 30-minute or so window, give, take, coming up and motion of bodies. But the point being, I give you two minutes. I don't want to be rude to you, but I have to be fair to everybody. First person is Virginia, is that Ellison?
Ellisor.
Ellisor, I couldn't tell if that was an R and N.
Councilwoman, thank you for letting me speak.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a concerned citizen, extremely concerned about immigration in this country, both legal and illegal. Last month, because of my time limit, I read you half of a letter that I'd written to Senator Lee Bright and the senators who passed the proviso to stop the funding for refugee resettlement into Spartanburg, into South Carolina. So I'd like to finish that letter for you tonight, and if I, okay. It was to Senator Lee Bright, Tom Davis, Harry Peeler, Shane Matt, anyway. The subject is ending all United Nations and US State Department planned refugee resettlements into South Carolina and into the United States, ending all of it. Haley, behind closed doors, approved this, and then after the Senate, our legislature found out about it, they passed the proviso, got it passed in June and defunded this program. got it passed in June, and defunded this program. But, and I, okay, here's the end of my letter. Our South Carolina citizens must become informed about the true nature of these refugee resettlements and the cost to taxpayers and the dangers they pose. These refugee resettlements are a racket that make the corporations pushing them very rich. Then they dump these refugees onto the taxpayers for life. You pay for them for the rest of their life, and it can bring to whole families. It's part of the law. We must end this refugee resettlement now, or it will be too late to save Spartanburg, South Carolina, and the United States and our constitutional republic. These refugees come, can become permanent citizens within five years, but I'm sure the Obama administration will have them voting for the Democrats much sooner than that. This is the total transformation of America that Obama promised you. We must stop this now if we are to remain a free constitutional republic. Please read Ann Coulter's new book, Adios, America.
Virginia, I've got to cut you off there.
She says they're coming to, not to live free, not to breathe free, but to live free.
Thank you, ma'am. I gave you a little bit of extra time there, but...
I'm going to be bad. Go on, the untold story of Islamic training camps in America. Everybody go on that, and you'll find out about Sheikh Jalani. Find out. Mulvaney told you, he's a good old guy, just an American citizen. This camp's not doing anything wrong. He had Pearl beheaded in the Middle East. He probably trained this woman to kill people in California.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got to give time for the other people. Mr. Allen, Dean Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
And members of the council and the staff here in York County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Glad to have you here.
I am Dean Allen. I live in Greenville, South Carolina. I had the privilege three years in a row of being elected a state chaplain for the Veterans of Foreign Wars a few years ago. I look up here and see "In God We Trust" on the wall. I like seeing that. I read my Bible, and it tells me in Romans, Chapter 13, that all government is put there by the authority of God, and I am to respect it. And I do respect each of you, and I appreciate the work you do. I'm here, as I was last month, again, to talk to you about this subject of refugee resettlement. Last month, I talked to you after a terrible tragedy in Paris, France. Tonight, I'm talking to you right after a terrible tragedy in California. As one of the other speakers mentioned, today happens to be Pearl Harbor Day, and there was a tragedy in this country 74 years ago today. I simply hope that there never is a tragedy right here in York County because Islamic terrorists commit one of these acts here. And I will pray for you, gentlemen, for your wisdom, and you ladies, for your wisdom as you carry out your duties. And like the other speakers, I ask you to consider adopting a resolution to stop refugee resettlement until such time as our government can do a much better job of vetting who are these people to become your new neighbors. So I thank you for the opportunity to be here, sir, and I wish you and everybody in York County a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Swain, next person?
Well, I am not working. I am from York County. I'm from Rock Hill, 2283 Blossom Drive. And about the refugee resettlement, these are some questions you guys and girls need to ask yourselves about it. What percentage of people in York County do you think are in favor of any refugees being resettled in our county after what has just happened in Paris and California? Have you asked the top law enforcement agent in the county, the sheriff, what he thinks about the refugee resettlement? You need to ask him. Have him come before you guys in a private meeting. Have you asked any of the schools if they can handle the increased time and taxpayer money it will take to prepare refugee children to tackle their curriculums? I know a person that's already having to do that. The proviso on the state budget says counties must approve any resettlement. Shouldn't we be proactive and tell the governor and all the other organizations trying to place them in our county that we don't want them? I don't think we need to sit back and let them think we do. The proviso also states that no state money will be appropriated to fund any refugees settled in our county or in the state. How many of our county taxpayers know this? Question mark. Would they be willing for you to spend county money to fund these refugees? That's all I have.
Thanks, Swain. Appreciate it. Next person's Paul.
Paul Andercole, Rock Hill, South Carolina. Transparency is very important. I was here last October talking about GPS supporting the bond issue. And in that comment, and I've talked to quite a few of you, there was some agreement, nod heads, that if the bond issue will pass under budget or on budget, that we could proceed with administration building. And I've talked to quite a few personally about this issue. And I believe, like, that going on, you should have had the administration building on the bond issue set going around our damn backs. We are watching our taxpayers' money. Some of you run on being a taxpayer watchdog, but I am irritated that you should have put the bond, the administration on the bond issue set coming up in a secret meeting, putting it on the agenda at the last minute, not having the people talk about the wants and needs. Do we really need administration building? Eventually, yes, we do. But not until you come under budget on the other buildings, as we talked about last October. And I am irritated that this is on the agenda tonight. I was almost enough irritated that we're here talking about it. I want, hope when you talk about it, you vote no on this issue and, you know, your personal needs, having a Taj Mahal building. You can go to McAvie Building to have your meetings. You don't have to have them in this small, little, tiny office with 35 people with an agenda. Oh, the fire marshal says you can't have it. I know, and most of the people know here, that's baloney. So administration building needs to be put off just because of a certain few of you that want it. It's not on the agenda. We didn't vote for it. If you would have put it on the boat, we would have, you would have lost, and you know it. It wasn't for our effort at GPS, this thing would have went down in flames on the bond issue. Amen.
Thanks, Paul. Next person is Diane Simmons. Yes, ma'am.
Evening. I'm Diane Phelps Simmons from Clover, and I'm here once again to plead with you to address the Syrian refugee issue and any refugees, and to refuse any relocation of these refugees into our county, York County. As we remember Pearl Harbor Day 74 years ago today, we note we were viciously surprised attacked by a foreign enemy. Today, we have the same kind of enemy, an enemy that seeks to destroy us, only they are here to destroy us from within. From Fort Hood to the Boston bombing to Chattanooga, to what just happened in San Bernardino, California, these were all innocent Americans viciously blindsided by Muslims in their communities. We don't know the people that our own federal government is trying to force into our community, and the feds have openly admitted to the lack of proper vetting. But we do know this. The refugees include fighting-age men who don't stay in their own country to defend their country and their women and their children and their elderly. These are not what I call honorable men. They are part of an ideology that seeks to kill all infidels. And I think that includes most, if not all, of us in this room and our families. They try to use our Christianity against us. What would Jesus do? Well, I'll tell you what Jesus would do. He would protect the innocent. You must take the initiative to protect our citizens since our own federal government clearly is ignoring this constitutional duty by letting these Syrians and other refugees into our country. I implore you, I beseech you, no, actually, I'm begging you, I beg you, to take action to refuse the relocation of any of these refugees into York County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person's Tom Balick.
Hi, I'm Tom Balick from Lake Wylie. I was here two meetings ago. I was flabbergasted that the council did not even offer a second for Councilman Anderson's earlier motion. I was just stunned, as was every single York County citizen that I talked to about it, and there were a bunch of them. So like the others here, I beseech you to reconsider the resolution. It appears you're going to do that. You've received a lot of good information tonight. I want to just hit a couple of high spots one more time. My understanding from talking with the council for the state legislature is that that budget proviso is written into law. It was voted, approved, signed by the governor, and is enforceable according to council, council for state legislature. So there, that proviso is in place that allows any county who dissents against the UN refugees, specifically the UN Refugee Resettlement Program, any county council can essentially opt out with a resolution. That's what we're asking you to do for all the reasons you've already heard tonight. The other point I want to make is that something that hasn't been discussed is the ugly, the bitterly ugly corruption involved in this program. If you do some research into the UN Refugee Resettlement Program, set aside the Syrian issue, that's small potatoes compared to the much larger UN issue. If you look into that in detail, you'll see how ugly the corruption is. There are tens, hundreds, millions of dollars of taxpayer money being funneled into these pseudo-religious organizations, and afterward, there's almost no oversight. Where did the money go? You know, how did it get to the people that it got to? Who's been bought? So you've heard about all there is to say from the others in terms of details. Like them, I beseech you, please vote, make a resolution tonight to stop the UN program in York County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robert H. Walker, 5690 Williamson Road. The address is Rock Hill, and I'm from the beautiful, wonderful, historic Bethesda community. I rise this evening first to chat a little bit about where, I think I mentioned at the beginning of the year, we're in our 230th year of celebrating the founding of York County. I can't think of any better way to end that 230 years of asking for y'all's full support for a conservation easement this evening. I am an appointee of District Five on the York County Forever Commission. This is very historic. It's the Roach family was one of the original settlers in York County in that region, and now it's the Roddy family, another old family with deep roots. They're wanting to do a conservation easement of the Roach-Roddy property there on McConnell's Highway. And also added Bang for the Buck is a historic home that they're working on with the National Register. This goes to the core of the mission of York County Forever. And I think I chatted with y'all before, you've had a couple of people come to you tonight about pieces of pie, the sweet potato and the pecan pie. This is a very small piece of the pie. I will be coming for you hopefully next year, asking for a bigger piece of the other sweet potato pie when I talk about my multipurpose, or our multipurpose AgriTuri's Event Center, that I'm still waiting on that task force to be formed. We'll talk about that later. But I look forward to our joint workshop coming up hopefully in January. We can discuss more of the mission as we move upward and onward with York County Forever. But I do ask for your support tonight in this conservation easement. Thank y'all very much. If I don't see you at the next meeting, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Bobby. Next person's Elizabeth Hartley. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Hartley. My husband, Alan Hartley, and I own two businesses in Lake Wylie and live in Lake Wylie and have raised many children there. I'm here talking about the proposed park for Lake Wylie. The H-tax allocation for the Aquatic Center was a wonderful strategic move and a great start to generating additional tourism revenue in Lake Wylie. But now we have the opportunity to build upon that and get even greater return by adding the funds to develop a park close by that would serve two benefits. One, hosting sports tournaments. It's indisputable that it generates revenue. So this is an investment, not a gift. A good example, I mean, all sports have their events. My son's a swimmer, and we just got back last night from a four-day event in Cary, North Carolina. And I did the math, every swimmer, there was 20 from Rock Hill, $400 ahead. My husband and I spent about $500. There were multiple teams there from down the East Coast. I did the math, that's $168,000 impact to Cary, North Carolina, over the course of four days. And that's just one event in one sport. So we're going to get some of that benefit through the Aquatic Center, which is wonderful, but that's a limited season. So by parlaying the efficiency of adding that park nearby to that facility to have tournaments year-round will not only generate revenue from the restaurants, the Walmart, the other businesses and recreation facilities in the area, it's just going to be tremendous. And it's a very efficient use of those resources by putting them so close together. But the added benefit is during the week, during the non-tournament times, the quality of life for local residents will be enhanced, the property values will go up, and it will add to the growth of the area. I raised my kids in Lake Wylie. There was not a single park. We're the only district in the whole county that does not have a park, not one. There was not even a sidewalk to teach my children to ride a bike. I had to go to Steel Creek area of Charlotte to use their parks, and we would have picnics, and we would find excuses to go shopping. I took all my revenue there because there was no park. And now we have the opportunity to parlay that benefit, too. So ultimately, there's just so much efficiency to be had and benefit to be gained by investing in Lake Wylie's park. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next person's Jack Roddy.
I'm Jack Roddy, and my wife, Ann, who is with me tonight, we live in a home that's over 200 years old, been in our family for over 100 years. It sits on a tract of land of 57 acres just outside the city limits of Rock Hill on Highway 322 going toward McConnell's. We would propose to put this property into a conservation easement with the Nation's Forward Land Trust with assistance from York County Forever, who will be making a presentation to the council tonight on this project. And Janet Steele is with us, and she's the executive director of the Nation's Forward Land Trust and also sits on the board of York County Forever. She's going to be here tonight to answer any questions that the council might have about this project. And we would hope that the council could give this favorable consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy.
Good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. I thank you very much for allowing us concerned citizens from around the state, including this county, as you've heard, to address you. I am Nelson Waller, a professional musician and journalist from Anderson. As I said before, the eyes of South Carolina and in a sense the whole country are on you. The question hanging in midair is not so much what will York County do regarding the putative refugees, but whether America wants to remain American. Liberal fairy tales aside, please consider this article from the Boston Globe titled "The Downside of Diversity." It has become increasingly popular to speak of racial and ethnic diversity as a civic strength, but a massive new study based on detailed interviews of nearly 30,000 people across America has concluded just the opposite. Harvard political scientist Robert Putnam has found that the greater the diversity in a community, the fewer people vote and the less they volunteer, the less they give to charity and work on community projects. In the most diverse communities, neighbors trust one another about half as much as they do in the most homogeneous settings. The study, the largest ever on civic engagement in America, found that virtually all measures of civic health are lower in more diverse settings. Now, of course, America had a certain level of diversity before this present endless tidal wave of immigration began, and it was a healthy thing. And I'm calling for nothing more than going back to that situation. Never explained is why America lives... Never explained is why America lives to serve non-Americans now. As the pressing desires and needs of actual Americans are stonewalled, we trust that you will show the world the real essence of America on this issue, namely, the primacy of representative government and the rule of law. And if I may say so, any politician that would take a bribe on this thing to, to put something through to benefit minority interests is worse than the atom spies. We've just seen Jonathan Pollard case, and so that's my, my urgent plea to you all, and again, thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person's Jacob Brannum.
It's Brannum, actually.
Oh, okay.
Like many of the others here, I'm here to speak about the immigration issue, the Syrian refugee resettlement program. I live in York, South Carolina, and I'm only 24. It's my first time doing this kind of thing. Unlike many of the others who seem to appeal to what's happening right now and bringing a lot of emotional vitriol to the discussion, I want to bring up the history. There's a city in Saudi Arabia now known as Medina. It was formerly known as Yathrib, and it was a Jewish city. Over a one-month process that was led by Muhammad himself, he managed to bring enough people into this city to convert it from Judaism to Islam through this very short process. It took less than a month, about three weeks, in fact. If I'm not mistaken, it was July 12 to June, or forget it. The point is, it took less than a month to take a city over. That city is now the capital of the head of almost all of Sunni Islam, and that, all it took was less than a month. How much longer would it take to take United States over? We're, we're the crown jewel when it comes to Islam want to take anything over. We're the great Satan, as someone else had pointed out. Why wouldn't they wish to take over the United States? And they would do it in an area like Dearborn, Michigan. Look at the crime rates there. Look at the amount of Islamics that live there. That's probably the wrong term to use. The one other argument I believe that no one else has made so far, that I believe comes from common sense, is that no one asked for these refugees. If we wanted them here, we would have asked for them, but not a single person here that I have heard has had anything positive to say about us bringing them here. I don't believe that anyone in this county has asked for these refugees, and that's all I have. You guys have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person's John Brown. Yes, sir.
I'm John Brown from Cuxhaven Court, Fort Mill. That's a street in Regent Park. Would like to talk about the rezoning and redevelopment issue of the golf course. Would like to read in part a letter from my, my next-door neighbor Caroline Land. She sent to some of you today. I am voicing my concerns as a resident that this will, that will be impacted by this change. Current state of the property is a golf course. Golf course was one of the premier courses in the region for many years and attracted local tournaments to Fort Mill. Regent Park was a planned golf course community until purchased by the current owners. Looking back at how they managed the course and treated the patrons, it's obvious their long-term goal was to sell off the course to a developer. Your statement that RD1 designation is applied principally to undeveloped areas where unit density and flexibility will not adversely impact existing residential subdivisions and where housing market can be broad and flexible to meet the various needs, demands for housing. Again, this is a golf course, not a vacant lot or parcel, as mentioned in the zoning proposal. This property touches homes on Cuxhaven Court, Hampton Estates, Heritage Boulevard, and Wentworth, where the homes range in value from $3,000 to $500,000. The homes, these homes' values will be significantly impacted by redeveloping into high-density homes. We understand Meritage Homes is proposing to build homes with much greater density than currently have in our area. So, Councilman, Councilman Johnson had a, a breakfast meeting at the Regent Park Cafe about six weeks ago. If you recall, we overflowed that restaurant with patron, with residents from Regent Park, overwhelming dissent against development at all. But, as you stated, you know, you can't keep someone from developing their own land. What we would like for you to consider is that they not be allowed to develop it into high-density houses that are significantly different than the houses that are already there, and only allow that they develop with homes of similar value as existing.
John, I have to cut you off there, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next person's Dwayne, there you are.
Good evening, Council Chairman Blackwell, Council Madam, and gentlemen. My name is Dwayne Christopher of 2424 Indian Hook Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina, landscape architect representing Family Auto Sales LLC. I did have a two-minute, 45-second message, but in light of the fact, I'm changing the script, and I do want to say that Mr. and Mrs. Devine is here, also Bruce Larry of the, of the business. First, I want to thank Councilman Bon Perotti for meeting with us and having conversations several times with us and to move the process along in a positive way. Tonight, Councilman Roddy is asking for a 30-day deferral on our behalf, and we agree to this deferral at this time. The reasons for the deferral, I will defer to Councilman writing because our time is limited, and if there's any questions, we will stay during the meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Dwayne. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Next person is Denise Devine. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe that she is.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Next order of business is public.
I signed up by mistake on the open.
Right, that's why.
All right. I'd like to give my two minutes to Mr. Tyndall, Patrick Tyndall, if that's permissible. Patrick Tyndall was a 2006 candidate for US Senate against Jim DeMint.
Okay.
And he's, I'd like to give him.
Got two minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll let you have it.
Mr. Chairman, Madam, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Yes, if you would, if you would say your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is Patrick Tyndall.
Okay.
I drove over from my home in Greenville County today to urge you to oppose the resettlement of Syrian refugees in York County. There is no question that any refugee so-called who is moved to York County could easily move to anywhere in the state of South Carolina, and so that's why I drove over here today. There are already something like 30 million illegal immigrants in the United States of America, and South Carolina has a disproportionate share of them. Illegal immigrants compete with South Carolinians for social services, welfare, healthcare, housing, education, jobs, and many other things. The question is, why should we want more immigrants in South Carolina? Much has been said about them already tonight. I won't go over that again. I'll just say that the proposed immigrants bring with them a culture that is extremely and decisively foreign to ours. By way of example, I would ask you to look at the situation in Sweden and Norway where there, the issue of honor killings, the issue of female mutilation was unknown, completely unknown before they were invaded by so-called refugees and immigrants of this genre. Rape was almost completely unknown in those two European countries, and those immigrants account for 100% or nearly 100% of all the rapes that occur in those countries. A lawyer came to Jesus one night. He said, "What's the greatest commandment?" He said, "Love God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and a second's like it, love your neighbor as yourself." Ladies and gentlemen, if we love our neighbors, and I know you do, we're not going to invite a population of people that's going to terrorize them and victimize them. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Next order of business is public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, Chapter 154 entitled Subdivision Code, Section 154.030 B4 and M, plat approval process, preliminary plat applications and supporting data, in order to amend and clarify perimeter buffer yard standards for residential developments to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Moved to close.
Got a motion to close. We have a second discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Do I have a new motion?
Moved to approve.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Next order of business, counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, Chapter 155 entitled Zoning Code, Sections 155.429, residential density requirements in the RC1, RC2, RD1, RD2, and BD3 zoning districts, 155.430 open space requirements, in order to provide maximum residential density requirements within the RC1, RC2, RD1, RD2, and BD3 zoning districts, renumber the open space ordinance to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Jim Hudson. I live at 3277 Bannock Drive in Fort Mill, Regent Park, and I just wanted to express my support for the density zoning ordinance and beg you to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine so that, you know, hopefully these developers who should already know about this, if a common person like myself knows about it, surely developers who it's their job to know about it should already be planning for the new ordinance or at least have a contingency, contingency plan in place in case it gets passed. So, we just beg you to please pass this ordinance with the pending ordinance doctrine. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else want, yes, ma'am.
My name's Wanda Woodley. I live at 3277 Bannock Drive, and I'm also asking you to support the density ordinance in favor with the pending ordinance doctrine. As it was mentioned earlier, this is the potential building that's going to happen very soon in our area is going to impact us and the, the houses around us as it's going to be a, a very different than what is currently built and established in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else want to speak in favor?
Good evening. Chris Frazier, 6575 Bigger Lane, Lake Wylie Community. I also support the proposed residential gross density requirements. I do have a question, though. RC1, RC2, RC1 proposed is one dwelling unit per gross acre for modular homes and single-family detached. There's also a, three dwelling units per gross acre for patio detached homes. I'm not sure I understand the distinction when it comes to, you know, unit per acre. I don't understand the difference between modular and singular, or single detached, and the difference between patio, and that's referenced in RC1 district and the RC2 district. I understand RD1 and 2, the grosses are higher, and that may make sense, but I just don't understand that particular distinction. But I do support it, and I thank staff and council very, very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else in favor? Anybody opposed?
My name is Billy Hagner in 1901 Voyager Road, York, South Carolina. I was here about a month ago and expressed some of my concerns concerning, I guess, the phase one of the zoning changes, and after that presentation, Audrey Miller, the planning department, did write me a very detailed, I guess, response, which I do appreciate. She spent considerable amount of time doing that, and one of the, I guess, one of the things that she did give me is this map. It's not very visible from, from here. It's got a little bit too much light, but the area that I am concerned about, excuse There we go. Okay. This map that Audrey did give me, give me was showing the Lake Wylie area, and then also on it, it is showing all the existing planned developments that's been approved or that's in the process of being developed. As you can see, there's a, quite a few number of places that's under, underdeveloped or being planned to be developed. My area of concern is from the Crowder Creek area down to the Little Allison Creek area. It's about a six-mile run, several thousand of acres. Most of that is RD2, and the changes that are being made, RC1, RC2, RD1, and does have the apartments taken out of them and no longer permitted there. Only RD2 and BD3 are permitted for apartments. This just shows the area showing the zoning. Right over here is 274, that's Crowder Creek. There you can see just about all of that's RD2. There is some RUD, a pretty good size. There's one large area of, it's RUD. So, in my opinion, that could probably, if the owners wanted to, it could probably be rezoned to RD2 if, if anybody, if they wanted to do that, I would imagine it would get, would get approved. I guess the next area is between Crowder Creek and down to where the nuclear plant is. There again, you can see most of that, that's the brown, is RD2. Of course, the nuclear plant is industrial, so that's not an area of concern. And then the rest of it from nuclear plant down to Allison Creek is all RD2. So, some of the, I guess, some of the planning department's thinking is that most of this area is already, is in small partials or is already being developed. So basically, there's just not much of a thought that it's going to be that many apartments or high-density developments in this area. So that's, looks like to me, it's like we're maybe a little bit, we're a year or two late on getting this through. We need to remember that our original concerns were, when this started over a year, year and a half ago, was in the, primarily in the Lake, Lake Wylie, Fort Mill area, was traffic, was overcrowding of our schools, environmental issues around the, and due to construction, and just high density around the lake in general. In my opinion, the changes that are being made in this next phase, there's a lot of good changes in it, and it's going to help in a lot, in a lot of the areas. I do think it's, it's positive. However, in the RD2 area, in this area I'm talking about, I still think it's going to have a negative effect, and I hear again, I'm going to say our original goal was to try to reduce density, at least that's what my goal was, was trying to get some reduced density in this area to affect the traffic in the schools. So basically, there were really no changes done to the RD2 zoning, other than there is a density, now they did add a density zoning, I think, of, of density of four and a, of four and a half, I think, is what it is. of four and a half, I think, is what it is. Which is better than what it was. But the thing that it does not have, there's, in the whole program, does not have any minimum lot size. Here again, you can still have up to seven houses per acre in these areas. Of course, what that means is you're going to have to have clear cutting, and it's going to be massive grading. So, there's really nothing to address that, that I saw. I know we are talking about having a watershed district. They're looking at that. I highly recommend y'all continue to do that. However, it's really not going to affect any of the developments that's going to be going for the next year or two, as I can see. One other question, I guess I do have, that I have some, a little bit of concern on, was that in the planning department put out a memo 1116, and it's the same letter almost that's in y'all's packet. And it did mention that they were looking at the changing or getting a provision to have the gross density raised up to four units per acre in RD2 for infilling. And I didn't see it in the packet this time. So, I'm just, I'm asking that it get dropped, or did, or is it something that's going to be postponed and it's going to show up at a later date? So, I don't know who can answer that. But it did, it's one concern I do have, that we're going, we either going to make, we even going to make the density higher in the RD2 area for certain specific cases. I'm assuming y'all will respond.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Could I ask Ms. Aldra to...
Yes, sir.
...address that?
Yes, sir.
Would you please?
In answer to Mr. Hagner's question, no, we did not add any provision for infill. During my presentation at the last council meeting, we mentioned at the staff level that we do feel that will be a change that needs to be brought to council. We don't think it'll be, we will present anything changing the RD2. We were thinking either that it might be a special exception or a new zoning district that people would have to apply for.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is that that change would not be applying to the RD2 zoning district?
Correct. At this time, yes, correct.
Okay. But it may be proposed later, is what I'm hearing, too.
The general thought is we would leave RD2 alone, and it would probably be a new zoning district. That's the direction we're leaning right now.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for your time. Like I said, there's a lot of good things in this, in the changes. However, I just don't think we went far enough in the certain areas that I was concerned with and a lot of other people in the area concerned with. But I still think there may be an opportunity to make some changes, but I don't know if that'll happen or not. And I do recommend we continue on with the water district, looking at the water district area. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Anybody else opposed?
Moved to close.
Got a motion to close? Got a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do I have a new motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roddy?
I have a quick question. Which, which one of the zoning measures was he speaking of that said you could put seven houses per acre?
None of them would, is proposing seven units to the acre for detached family without any densities, which is our current ordinance. If you use the minimum lot size, you could do, and most of the districts theoretically, it's seven units to the acre, and that's what this would be changing.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Miller, now, I want to get this clear about the RD2. This, as far as multi-level, multifamily, is this allowed here as well?
RD2 would allow multifamily. That was...
Multi-level?
Yeah. Council voted on the previous changes to remove the multifamily from RD1, UD, and the BD2, but it remains in the RD2 and the BD3.
Anybody else?
Mr. Johnson? I want to confirm, as I was reading through the notes and been looking at this, these changes, what this does is, when I look at your formula, this should reduce density. Am I correct?
Yes.
And in fact, this is a substantial change in density. Could take some areas where they may have had 100, could reduce it 15 to 20 percent depending on the area of just gross density in an area. Correct?
Yes, depending on the current zoning, it impacts the RC1 and the RC2 the most.
And with the pending ordinance doctrine in effect tonight, this will apply to any development that goes before the planning commission after tonight. Correct?
It is, it could potentially affect them. It is a case-by-case study, a case-by-case issue because it depends on certain facts.
If they had notice and they meet...
Yes.
We meet the requirements of the statute.
Yes.
This is that notice.
We invoked it the first rate.
We did, but tonight's the public hearing. Thank you.
Anybody else? Question or motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Henderson? Next item, counsel to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 155, entitled Zoning Code, Sections 155.009, general provisions, definitions, 155.010, general provisions, permitted uses and special exemptions table, 155.146W, Business Development 3 District, permitted uses, 155.147B4, Business Development 3 District, special exceptions, in order to provide for a definition of a trucking operation, add trucking operation and outdoor storage of junk, salvage, or inoperable trucks and trailers associated with an approved trucking operation to the table of permitted uses and special exceptions, provide for a trucking operation as a permitted use within the BD3 zoning district, and outdoor storage of junk, salvaged, or inoperable trucks and trailer accessory to an approved trucking operation as a special exception within the BD3 zoning district, to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Shannon Treblefield. I live at 2534 Ivy Creek Ford in York. I'm here tonight asking you to consider this exception, allowing trucking companies to store inoperable trucks on their property. My family has operated a small trucking company in Western New York for 22 years now, and this has just recently become an issue with our company. We had no idea that we were not in compliance with approved zoning and are just trying to keep our business, small business alive. A neighbor recently complained about the inoperable vehicles that we store on our property, that we use for parts. These vehicles are vehicles that were purchased for us to use on the road, and then they were involved in some type of accident, and we are now using them for parts. Or they were purchased for the parts themselves. For us to no longer to be able to store these trucks and their parts on our property would be an astronomical hit to our small business. We currently employ approximately 15 people and just added on to our existing building. The expense of our company moving or removing the existing inoperable trucks is something that we are not able to withstand at this point. The time and money that storing these trucks on our property saves us is immeasurable. We are in good standing with the county at this point and always have been, and we want to run our business and be successful in the county. Thank you for your consideration of our small business in this matter.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Motion to close.
Got a motion to close? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Moved to approve. Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
...offer an amendment to that motion. I'd like to amend this ordinance and remove the BD3 restriction and change that to an ID.
A second.
Who gave the original motion?
I did.
Robert?
Robert did? Okay.
Well, it's probably not.
It's not.
So... No?
No.
Okay. So, that's the, so you made that as a motion?
Yeah, I did make that as a motion.
And we had a second? So, discussion on the new motion?
The current...
Mr. Johnson?
...ordinance as it's written would allow trucking operations. I have no problem with trucking operations. I understand the need, the need for this business to have this. I certainly believe they could have it if it was zoned ID and this land was rezoned. Problem that I have is that a majority of the land along Highway 21 and other areas of my district and in the Fort Mill area are BD3. And so, what you're saying is basically, you're going to open up huge tracts of land in the Fort Mill township to truck salvage. And that is my problem as I sit here. I don't think that's an appropriate, I don't think BD3 is the appropriate zoning. I don't think that is the appropriate area inside of my area. This is one of the problems with the county, as the county is as large and diverse as York County is, is what's good for one area, it may not be good for another area. I don't want to see this business go under, but I do not want this zoned the way it's moving in my area. And I'm asking that we change this to ID, and then certainly the applicant could ask to simply rezon that land to industrial. And we would, I feel confident this council's not going to put them out of business.
Robert?
First of all, I want to make clear that if I have to, have to accept that amendment, I do not. I said no on that.
Right, I got it.
And, you know, I've heard Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Cox's concerns in the past about how much acreage they have that is on BD3 and how it would open up to more trucking in those areas. But according to the chart we were just given, only Council District 1 has less acreage zoned ID than BD3. Every other district up here has more acreage zoned ID. So, if you're concerned about getting more trucking in because of the BD zoning on it, then that, that argument doesn't make sense. If we say, okay, then everybody has to be an ID to do trucking, you're opening up, I mean, you look at, pick a district, District 4 BD3 is 38 acres, 275 acres in industrial. District 7, 181 acres BD3, 660 acres of industrial. So, if your concern is that BD3 opens it up for too many trucking companies, which trucking companies aren't a bad thing, in my opinion, then that argument doesn't hold to say that it needs to be an ID zoning for that because you're opening up even more acreage for trucking companies. So, that, that argument doesn't make much sense to me on that side. So, and so, you know, plus, we are taking many businesses around the county that are currently conforming and making them non-conforming. If we say, okay, now you can't be, you know, BD3 in that, you've got to be ID. We're taking all these businesses that have been around, some of them 20, 30 years, that have been conforming all this time, and tell them, you're no longer conforming, now you're non-conforming. And they haven't changed anything.
Ms. Cox?
First off, let me say, thank you for operating the business that you have. And what I think was proposed is not that we, that we interfere with anyone who's doing business currently. The question, and I believe that we can deal with this in a lot of different ways. We can deal with it as a non-conforming use grandfather that you sent as a previous interpretation. But this has serious, broad-sweeping ramifications in other districts. And I would implore other council members, if their concern is to make sure that the businesses that are currently operated aren't affected, that we not create a rule that opens up a tremendous amount of trucking in BD3 areas, which are interspersed. In District 5, they're all over the place. They're near residences, they're near, it doesn't really matter if we have more industrial because the industrial areas are at the road intersections that need to be there. But if you look at District 5, you will see, and District 1 as well, the BD3s are interspersed throughout places that we don't want this to happen. And if we allow it to go that way, we're going to have created a bigger problem that we could have settled by just agreeing to allow non-conforming uses or grandfather existing uses for the businesses that are currently having there. There's a way to make this happen for both, for all of the districts. And I just don't understand why we have to continue having this fuss up here, why we can't work together on this.
Audra, we need your tremendous intelligence now to give us some advice here.
Okay. There are a couple options at this point. First, to answer, respond to Councilwoman Cox's comment about non-conforming. They are not a non-conforming use. That is the problem that, that has arisen, that the, the storage of the parts, they appealed to the ZBA, they argued that they were already non-conforming, and they're not, that, that they did not come in as a non-conforming use. So, that would be problematic. The options on the table at this point are, do not make any changes, and we would therefore go forward in shutting them down on their storage part, to go forward with the BD3 recommendation, and then they would have to apply for a special exception, or change it to an ID. And in that case, and there are two options. Yes, the owner could apply for rezoning on this particular piece of property, or council can also do a council-initiated rezoning if they so choose. They could direct staff to prepare the application and present it to council.
You're saying essentially that we could just direct you to do ID and you just do the paperwork, and then we...
It would have to be separate, and I believe it would have to be on the agenda separately. I mean, on this one, it would be, you could send us back and say, change this to ID for the zoning. And at the same time, council would want it on the agenda as a separate item on whether or not they wanted to do a council-initiated rezoning for this parcel.
And then we'd have to go through the public hearing and three readings again?
For the parcel.
And in the meantime, do they operate their business?
Yes, we would consider the whole issue stayed until all of this is resolved, however it is resolved.
Mr. Williams?
The, I guess, I mean, that, that seems like a good, good answer. The question, I guess, in the material, it looked like the problem with ID was that trucking operations weren't allowed, that the storage was, but the trucking wasn't. So, I mean, if we can overcome that by simply changing the ID, that if Mr. Winkler likes that, that would solve a lot of problems. I agree with Ms. Cox. But that's what, when I was reading through it, that's the thing that struck me most, is that there was, we didn't have anywhere that they, that they could go. Because where the salvage was, was allowed, trucking was not, where trucking was, the salvage was not. And it's interesting to promote ID. Anyway, I think we go through with the, well, we just need to find that out. And if we go through with this amendment, we need to make it where truck, where trucking's allowed, too. I think you'd have to change it more than you've offered. But at any rate, what I was trying to get at, when I was thinking about the options myself and going ID, I kept referring back to the industrial park that just got all upset about having the doggy daycare beside them, that they would not be very happy with having trucking operations beside them. So, I mean, it's not the, the history that's in here and what's happened, I hope we can figure out something. If it's as simple as rezoning to ID and the council being able to do it, that's certainly worth considering.
Audra, what about Chad's point about ID not specifying the trucking?
The, the change to the overall ordinance would have to be ID would allow the trucking operations. And staff would still recommend, however, for the storage, the ancillary business, that they would need a special exception for that as well.
So, ID with special condition?
Yes. The, to hopefully have been clear, that, that solves one issue, but the question about then what happens to the existing trucking operations, especially regarding this one that's, that has kind of started this, again, they would have to come forward with a rezoning application themselves, or council can consider it on a different agenda on whether or not they want to direct staff to do a council-initiated rezoning.
So, if we did a council, which sounds to me the best way to do it, council-initiated, through the ID with conditional zoning would cover all their needs? Trucking and storage? Because if it doesn't...
We have to have trucking and ID.
We'd have to, you'd have to, the ordinance would have to be amended. Instead of being BD3, it would be ID for trucking operations with, and staff would still stay with the recommendation that the ancillary storage of vehicle be a special exception.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roddy?
So, everyone that would, everyone that would currently have the, so this would open it up for others to come ask for the special exception. It wouldn't automatically apply the storage. It would always be on a, on a special exception situation.
If that's how council approves the ordinance revision, you'd have to have a special... If that's how council approves the ordinance revision, you'd have to have a special exception.
And just for clarification for me, you know, for all the other trucking companies that are out there, when we say this has to be changed, they don't all of a sudden have to go out and start asking for rezoning until someone complains that they're non-conforming at that point, correct?
Correct. At this point, any business that's operating as a trucking operation and assuming they're in BD3, in general terms, we would consider them non-conforming. And if they can prove, if they had the storage and all of that, whatever they proved was in existence, we would consider them non-conforming until they wanted to expand it or change it.
And even without the storage just being a trucking operation would make them non-conforming at that point if we changed the zoning?
Yes.
Well...
We're going to have to take it out of BD3. It's the storage we're trying to put into BD3.
Well, yeah, but if we move the trucking operation into ID and say that's where it's allowed...
It can be allowed in both.
Then we've taken everything out of...
It can be allowed in both. I don't know whether that's desirable, but it can be.
I think, no, I'm a little confused if council...
I'm not talking about accessory use, just...
No, but I did think that Councilman Johnson and Councilwoman Cox's issue was the trucking operations as well.
We're talking about...
Operations in BD3, yes.
Like they are currently allowed.
And have been for ever how many years?
I think that's the only issue is getting a grandfathering mechanism to put in place for existing businesses that have operated for a period of time. That seems to me that... We are creating a bigger problem to fix one and we can fix the ones that come up the same way we've done it this way.
This would fix, in general, instead of us having to do every one as they come up saying, okay, now this one, this, I mean, either way, we've got to do an exception or the zoning has to. But I just, you know, I don't know. I mean, I've said it all along, we've all set our parts here, but I don't understand. Yes, I know there's BD3 in certain areas and they probably don't want trucking or a doggy daycare or whatever in those areas. And there's industrial that probably doesn't want it. And there's, you know, RC1s that probably doesn't want it in industrial or whatever. Every time we do a zoning change, somebody doesn't want it. You know, to me, it just looks like we're continuously, with everything we're talking about doing here, putting more work on staff, putting more burden on our existing businesses, which is something, you know, Chairman White will just say all of them.
We've had one business come, we've had one business come up and do this.
Right. But we're talking about changing the zoning for every business in the county. If we change them from a BD to an ID and then make them all non-conforming, then we open up the potential for every one of them to have to rezone.
And I appreciate your point, but if you add up all of the acreage in District Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, together, they do not equal the BD3 in District One. And what you're about to say is that in District One, an area that is overrun with traffic, that you're going to be, that we're okay, that this county council is okay with a salvage yard being opened up in that area. That is an inappropriate use of that property. This is easier to simply refer it over to an ID, allow this applicant to get it. And there has to be a way for us to grandfather in everybody who's existing so they don't all have to walk through here one at a time. But if they do, it is better, in my opinion, for us to piecemeal this moving forward and have to approve these one-on-one so that we kind of, where we have some say in where a salvage yard might end up.
Audra, since this is your expertise, do you agree with that conclusion, that logic Mr. Johnson just announced?
Of course she agrees with it.
Because obviously, we all want to take care of the business. We all sympathize with the concern. And I'm hearing a back and forth. I'm just not hearing a clean solution. So what Mr. Johnson says, is that probably the best of the evils to do it that way?
Staff's opinion on this was, with all due respect to Councilman Johnson and Councilwoman Cox, we've heard you loud and clear. The reason staff proposed it as a BD3 and has maintained that recommendation is the trucking operations have been allowed in BD3. We did not see the need to change it. We wanted to stay with the status quo and that is why we made the recommendation.
Trucking operations take quite a bit of acreage. And with the price of acreage in Fort Mill, I don't see too many of them jumping up to buy BD3s to open up more.
What we're trying to do here is we're trying to fix a known problem and we are opening up Pandora's box by leaving this open. And I appreciate, you know, the comments, this is a, all of our districts have BD3 in them. And we are talking about a wholesale change and handing that over to a totally different body to handle that question, when it's our job as council members to deal with that question of salvage yards. We are creating a major problem to deal with one specific issue. And that never works. I mean, that's, that never works and it creates... It wreaks havoc on people. You think we've got a problem now, wait till the folks across from everywhere, I don't even know how else to say it. I'm so frustrated that it seems like we know exactly what we need to have happen and we're not doing that. I mean, we want to accommodate this business owner and any existing owners and not put other property owners at risk, BD3 property owners, and open that up. And we can't come to an agreement on that, sitting up here to make it work for everyone. It's an either-or proposition and this is politics at its worst. I mean...
Well, let me suggest this, if it's even appropriate. Obviously, we're not getting a clean result. We all want to kind of help both sides of the argument. And per Christie's point, we're kind of butting heads right now. Would it be amiable to the council to defer this to the next meeting, to give two weeks for the staff to kind of knock these comments around to see if we can...
I would much prefer to let this business owner get through this process and let's fix this problem. And let's take this up later, since that's the immediate pressing need.
I don't know that, I mean, we've asked staff every time we've had this and every time staff has come back and said, this is their recommendation.
Okay, well, that's a good point.
You know, it's, staff is the experts and we keep asking them for their expert opinion and then we keep arguing with them when they give it to us.
Fair enough, fair enough. So I think I've heard everybody's points. So question on the motion, all those...
Question on the amended motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, sir. And it, state the amended motion one more time. I think everybody's...
Remove all language from the ordinance relating to BD3 and replace it with ID.
Okay, so the amended motion, which is not Mr. Winkler's recommendation, everybody...
Just the amendment.
The amendment, sorry. Everybody's clear on that? So question on the amendment, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no.
No.
No. So now we'll go to the...
Main motion.
Right. So everybody's clear on the main motion? Any further discussion? Question on that motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
Okay. That was painful. All righty. True. Old business, discussion regarding refugee resettlement in South Carolina. Mr. Henderson, did you want to? She says no. It's just a discussion. Yeah, it's just for all of us, a discussion.
It's just discussion.
Right, so this was asked to be on there as discussion only.
Okay. All right, well, let me go ahead and just mention that, yes, I did try to bring this forward some several weeks back. And just to give you a quick, brief history on this, I went over to a meeting in Spartanburg as well as doing quite a bit of research on this issue. And we've heard quite a bit here tonight concerning this issue. Naturally, when some of these type of things come up, you know, you want to make, double sure that it's not a bunch of conspiracy theorists and all this type of thing and, you know, so I went and I verified, I made sure. And it turned out being that there was other elected officials at this meeting in Spartanburg, several, several individuals, just citizens. It was Democrat, Republican, Independent. The guy who gave the presentation was a, not that it matters, but he was a Jewish INS retired gentleman that had served for, I think it was 30-something years in INS. Well, he, I'm for sure, in some cases, he don't believe like I do. And some of these others in there didn't believe like I do, you know. But one thing that we all could agree on was the fact that we were facing a big, big problem, a big potential problem if we do not act upon what was coming down the line. It was already happening. It was beginning to happen. Quite a bit's happened since that day. And that's been at least two and a half months ago. So as I came back here, I mentioned one night here during a comment section of the agenda and give the information about that meeting. Maybe I didn't give enough at that time. I tried to be as specific as I could, tried to be as informational as I could. But I know, you know, during comment section, you know, some of us folks, we carry on a little too long and maybe that's, maybe that's why I was being a little quicker with it. But at this point now, it's so important, it may not matter how long, when did I get? Because it's very, very crucial and it is imperative at this point that we act upon this. The reasons are, first of all, that, when I came back and I introduced that, that night, I had a major issue. I was sick that night, but I made it in here when I found out that, you know, if I didn't get in here, this thing might get deferred or whatever. And I came in here and even had to take medicine to get here. But irregardless, I thought it important enough that we were facing a national security issue. No, it's not my duty from, as far as what the President, his responsibilities are, or any senator or anybody else, but it is my duty, it is our duty, to honor our sacred vow that we made when we took this office, like Mr. Chappell said earlier, that we make that oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and then of the State of South Carolina. Folks, that's sacred. And, you know, I can honestly tell you, there's a fourth branch to government. It's us, the people. You, the people. There, you look right in the preamble to the Constitution of the United States, it says, "We, the people." Before, there's anything written in the document, it says plainly, "We, the people," and in a bunch of commas about this, that, the other. And then it goes down and it goes to one last comment that says, "Do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." So ultimately, the people are the boss. And the people have spoken. They've made it very clear. I don't know of anybody that wants this. We've seen it on TV, we've seen the evil images, we've seen the evil actions, we've seen the trouble. And I introduced that thing. I don't know how, why, God, I had nothing to do with it, but I'm telling you this, it was two weeks before Paris that I tried to get that, a resolution, just a resolution, stating exactly the fact that we do not want to go along with this. And we wanted just to make a simple statement to the governor and every other county, and there's many other counties that are on board with this, not just in South Carolina, there's several, all around different states, and you've seen what the states did. But unfortunately, our governor recently, I feel like, did not go far enough. It was, it's already proven that state money is not supposed to be used for this program. And it looked like somebody was going to go behind our backs and do it. I don't appreciate that. Republican, Democrat, I don't care. I don't appreciate somebody willing to do that. Now, at this point now, like I said, we are the fourth branch of government and you, we, because I'm a private citizen too, but yes, I'm elected, but it is my duty to uphold this oath of office. It's my duty to protect the citizens that I represent. It's my sacred honor and to look out for the people. Because it's not a matter of if, it's when. And if you don't believe, again, this thing happened two weeks with Paris, two weeks after I tried to do that. And not that that would have changed it, no. But I mean, I didn't know it was going to happen, but it's like, nobody wanted to believe me or really, really take this serious until something big went down. Then, here we go again. I get postponed on this thing because of our rules of Parliament or Robert's Rule of Order or county ordinance or whatever you want to call it. All I can tell you is I couldn't do it. And it made me very irritated. Well, with that in mind, now we have another tragedy. And there's more, there's more that's happened that hadn't even been reported. They're on a much smaller scale. And there is an agenda to keep it suppressed. Now, at this point now, it's a no-brainer. At this point now, I hope my colleagues and I hope everyone will join me that we are allowed to have a resolution with some pretty strong language to not, to say, we will not accept these refugees. Now, I'm going to tell you this, this thing is fraudulent, like one of them, the speaker said a while ago, this thing has been fraudulent for a long time. And now people are catching on. It's not just Muslims, it's other, you know, regular immigration from the South, the border from the South, maybe even from the North. I don't know, but I know one thing, the 9/11 Commission, this is from federal level, 9/11 Commission's, their findings was this vetting system that we still currently have is horrible. It's horrible. That's why these people slipped through. And we've got a bunch more out there, too. And I'm telling you, whenever we just sit back and do nothing about this and speak our piece, and now, we may not be able to stop everything, we may not be, we may not be able to stop anything, but it is our sacred vow to protect these people, at least stand up and say, we will not accept it. Because it's just a matter of, not if, it's when, in York County, something's going to happen. And then if we don't, you know, make our statement to the governor or in everyone else, we're going to have, all I can say is I am going to have... We need to be able to face those people and say, we did everything we were supposed to do when that time comes. It's just a matter of time. Does it take having it to happen in Rock Hill, downtown South, downtown South Carolina, Rock Hill, York, right here, possibly tonight? Does it take that for you to get on board with the right decision? I hope not. There's some other things I want to mention. You know, if you're going to be so politically correct and morally superior about, well, we can't do this, you know, it's going to look like we're anti-immigrant, we're going to be anti-this, anti-Muslim, anti-Hispanic, anti-Middle Eastern, whatever, I'm just going to tell you this, I'll ask you a question. Would you go home tonight and leave all your doors unlocked and your windows unlocked? If you're going to be morally superior, do it. Don't be a hypocrite. Don't be a hypocrite. Let, let whoever wants to come in, come in. Take the chance on them robbing you, killing you, taking everything you got. "Oh, but that's not America, that's not us." No, no, I'm sorry. Folks, it's a matter of common sense. It's not a matter of hate. I don't want to hear that anymore. That dog won't hunt. I'm sick of it. I am, I am sick of it. You know, and I'll tell you this, this is another thing. When you're attacked by a shark, you don't look for a dolphin. And if you don't have enough of sense to do that, you're in bad trouble. I would ask my colleagues if they would allow a refugee resettlement resolution for our very next meeting, I would, I would ask even now, if you would allow me, not that we'll vote on it, but I'm going to ask you if you would allow me, someone, to allow me to read the resolution, to just simply go ahead and get this thing done and over with. I don't want to wait a whole year. Won't be long for us another year. I would ask my colleagues, my chairman, anyone and everyone up here, please, if it be the will of the council, we just move forward on this, and let's make our statement, and let's protect our citizens, and do what we're supposed to do. Or else, you know, folks, this has been done many times before throughout our history, from 1924 to 1965, there was only 2% of each nationality that was allowed into this country. Were we full of hate and bigotry? No. Were we full of hate and bigotry when President Obama even did it? No. When Bush did it? No. They were using their common sense. And then right now, if we don't make a statement to our governor, that's basically, I think she's actually possibly, maybe even embarrassed about it, seriously behind the scenes, because she didn't really vet the situation thoroughly herself. Let's please make this statement tonight, if it would be allowed. I certainly would appreciate it. These folks want it.
Bruce, let me, let me point this out to you. The request was to have it on for discussion, so your first point was probably the proper point, to be at the next council meeting. You know, it was presented at the previous council meeting, it didn't get a second. The chairman cannot overrule the will of the council. So, you know, I think maybe if, and I'll let other people speak, but just to answer your question to me, I think maybe if there's a resolution reworded in a nice succinct half-page, quarter-page resolution that maybe Mr. Kendry could help with by the next council meeting. I'm assuming a little bit that that would probably get the majority of council support. But that being said, all, any other council members want to say anything before we move on? Ma'am?
I'll say something.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we all have a duty to make sure that when we have constituents that come out, and the number that we've had, that we take a position on it, that we say it publicly, even if it's something that, you know, we don't think is, is in the power or the authority of the council to do. And I think that's one of the struggles that we've had, is that what authority does the council have to actually affect change? I'm at the point where I am prepared to, and I'm willing to consider a resolution that supports what our governor has done, and what she has put in her letter that we discussed and that I read in full, the, not the past council meeting, but the one before that. We're a nation of immigrants, we're the land of opportunity, and we should not allow fear to change who we are, period. At the same time, we have a duty and responsibility to take a stand on issues. And I believe that it is clear that the vetting process is not appropriate, the governor took action, our legislation, our legislator took, took action, and I would be willing to support a resolution that basically affirms what the governor has done, and to let them know that we, that we are paying attention and, and that we agree.
Yes, I would like to-
Don't push it while you're ahead.
Well, I just want to say this, I'm just hoping that we all understand that, that, you know, what Governor Haley has written is basically plea, if you really, really what comes down to it, that she is pleading with the president, "Please don't send them here. Please don't, we don't want the federal money, blah, blah, blah." You know, folks, we have got to make a bold statement. We have got, because if we don't, it's going to be pushed on this state. There's already problems in Charleston, in Dorchester County, of people being ran, ran through the system, and, and all this can be proven. I don't think you, in any way, if you think I'm crazy now, folks, I'm telling you, you know, I don't need to prove anything else. Is it, is it going to take some more killings? Is it going to take some more, somebody being beheaded? Is it going to take it happening right here before we'll finally say no until, because if we don't speak up, she will not feel the pressure to change and say, "We're not going to have it, period." I mean, yes, we are a nation of immigrants, and yes, we are a nation of, I mean, thank God we were able to come here. But it's not like it was in 1924. It wasn't, it's not like it was in 1950. We have people that are wanting, they have vowed to come and hurt us, kill us, take advantage of us, take our funds from our own people, people that really need it here. And they have no other goal in many cases. And I'd appreciate it if we are allowed to, to be very strong with the language, but professional.
Okay, let's do this, based on Ms. Cox's comment. Michael, could you, before the next meeting, come up with a clean, proper resolution to run by all the council members and-
Yes, sir.
-get the feedback, and we'll address that at the next meeting. Any comment?
I'm going to hold my comments for now.
Okay. Yes?
Because I'm going to, I will hold my comments till we actually see a resolution-
Right.
-if we're, we're really, I just want to make sure we are going to see a resolution on the 21st of some sort, something.
I think we need to figure out what we're doing in the-
I mean, I would support something along with Christie has said.
Right, right. I think we're all in agreement, our basic function, function to protect the citizens, we just don't want a wordy, rambling resolution.
And I do think that Bruce was right, this is a national security issue. If we say we're not letting whoever into this county, this is a very mobile country, and they come in any other county, they can be here in a short period of time. It's a national security issue.
If many people get on board, many counties get on board, we can prevent this.
Well, let's, let's move on, we got a lot to do, so Mr. Kendry, if you could work on that, and we'll have it on the next council meeting as proposed, and run it by the other council members, so we can kind of fine-tune it to their liking.
Fair enough, thank you.
Next item, rezoning action, consider third reading case number 1528, rezoned property from AGC to RUD at 4,040 2440 30 Shearer Road in the Sheareran Community.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. I think the next item, do you have a motion, Mr. Roddy?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we defer the rezoning of the Family Auto Sales property to our first meeting in December, January.
And I, and I will read it into the record, just so we can complete that action. But it's case number 1529, request to rezon property from BD 3 to ID at 1794 Saluda Street in the Rock Hill Community. Mr. Roddy's asked for a deferment.
I have a second.
Got a second? Question, yes, sir?
I was going to just briefly say, I've been working with the owner of Family Auto Sales and his neighbor, Mr. Anson, who, who've expressed some concerns, and I've fielded some phone calls from some area neighbors as well. I'm going to try to address some of those concerns prior to going to the third reading, and that's the reason for the deferment. The owner is willingly trying to adhere to some of those concerns, and he sees that it would be best, in his best interest and the community's best interest, that these issues are addressed.
Thank you, sir. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading case number 1530, request to rezon property from ID to RUD.
I have to approve.
Second.
Got, at 2961 Saluda Road in the Rock Hill Community. Got a motion? Man got a second? Okay, discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the existing agreement governing the York Chester Industrial Park to include additional properties located within the geographical boundaries of York County and the multi-county park, to remove a property located within the geographical boundaries of York County that no longer qualifies for inclusion in the multi-county park and other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the existing agreement governing the Cherokee York Industrial Park to include additional property located within the geographical boundaries of York County and the multi-county park and other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider amending in second reading of an ordinance authorizing the county sale of its speculative building located in Carolina Place Business Park, located at 2123 Carolina Place Fort Mill, South Carolina, described as a 50,400 square foot industrial building, owner about 7.98 acres, sold as is and identified by tax map numbers 655-000003 655-0000396 and 714000030 to Beacon Number 27 LLC pursuant to an option to purchase agreement to authorize the chairman and other county officials to execute documents related to sale and execute the deed and execute any other documents in furtherance of the closing and sale of the property, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 90, Section 90.01, in order to add parks to the title and preamble, to amend subsection E, to comply with state firearms laws, to prohibit paintball guns, and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, council to consider recommending approval to move forward with the building process for the York County administrative building at a cost of $24,201,109.
Move to approve.
Okay, do we have a second, since we already got a motion?
Second.
All right, Mr. Shanahan, if you want to-
Yes, sir. The March 16, 2015 council meeting, council approved the location of the New York County administrative building at the corners of Congress and Jefferson Street. The buildings will be eighty, the building will be 83,500 square feet plus or minus at a cost of $24,201,109. The annual impact of debt service for a new government center is as follows. The 24.2 million budget, using the $5 million appropriated from the general fund that borrowing for the building would be 19.5 million, excuse me, dollars. So based on a 15-year debt, with the debt being $19,201,109, and the value of the mill being $1,149,000, the impact of the debt service on, on annual taxes is, is as follows. Owner occupied at a $100,000 home is $6 a year. Owner occupied at a $250,000 home is $15 a year. Owner occupied at a $500,000 a year home would be $30 a year. Non-owner occupied homes or commercial party, property at $100,000 would be $9 a year. Non-owner occupied homes, commercial property at $250,000 would be $22.50 a year. And non-owner occupied home, commercial property at $500,000 would be $45 a year. These numbers are conservative, because we feel as a staff can get a very good interest rate, and as you know, the value of, as the value of a mill increases over time, the impact will decrease. The decision regarding when to construct this building falls mainly into three categories. Number one being economic outlook, number two, existing building issues, and number three, projected growth. In economic outlook, construction costs are rising in our area and will continue to grow. This is based on the current and projected growth in York County. Finance bonds rates are at a, are at record lows, and we will eventually start seeing these lows increase. Multi-project building programs will result in lower construction costs overall, as the more contractor participation you have during the bidding phase, the lower your construction costs. Projected growth, our current building size and setup makes it difficult to conduct current operations efficiently. We've just recently had to shut down our administrative conference room in the county manager's offices in order to have enough personnel space. We don't have the space to increase in personnel as the county services increase due to current and future county growth. Another example would be the county chamber size is way too small for a county with our population, and it results with our citizens having to go to the satellite offices and walking from those areas to this build, to this room if they want to talk to the council. Existing building issues, builder, this building contains asbestos, lead-based paint, which can cause issues if we have to perform in-house maintenance. The cost to renovate the current building would be high due to the age of the building and the abatement work that would be necessary, as we've seen with the courthouse. Employees will have to be relocated for an extended period of time if any renovation of the existing buildings was to, was to occur, but occur by means that we would have to rent all this space, because we'd have to move them out because of the abatement and stuff. The building was built to be a 50-year building, and it has reached its life expectancy. Newer modern buildings hopefully would help attract professional businesses in the area. This building's not energy efficient, so if you take all this stuff together, my, my recommendation would have to be, I feel that we would, it would be best for the county if we built a new administration building. Thank you.
Discussion.
I guess, I was going to start. I heard from many of what after tonight might have been previous friends today, after this vote, there may not be any longer, but, you know, some of them are here in the, in the room tonight expressing concerns about this. You know, I, I was, I'll be honest with you, I was surprised when I saw this vote on the agenda tonight. I didn't know we were voting on this. But in looking at it and from talking to Mr. Shanahan and from different things we've been told, you know, there's an economy of scale for the bond, the bond underwriting itself, and my company has nothing to do with this underwriting, but we have underwritten some in the past. And, you know, there, there is, my understanding is almost right at a million dollars in savings if we do the bond issue for everything at one time instead of breaking it up and doing two separate ones. Economic outlook, pretty much everybody who is anybody that, that follows anything to do with the Federal Reserve or, you know, that group believes that interest rates will be raised next week. So that will cost us a little bit, and we are expecting, I was talking to one of our product partners today, they're expecting two more increases next year, and two the following year, is basically what most of the experts are expecting. So every time we wait and an interest rate goes up, it costs us more money. You know, I, I see that, you know, existing building issues, I mean, we saw building issues with this tonight. Councilman Henderson's been talking about, you know, the, the issues of public spaces and- and that type thing. There are, I believe, five public entrances into this building. And most nights, other than when we have something like tonight going on, we have one of our fine outstanding sheriff's deputies here to watch, you know, we've got several tonight, so.
Yeah, speaking of...
But, you know, normally there's, there's one with five entrances and with all the public here. You know, that, that is a major security issue and safety concern. Whether we do anything with the resolution in the next meeting or whatever, you know, we've had plenty of our own homegrown evil idiots that have blown up government buildings with people in them in the past. All you gotta do is look back at Oklahoma City and other places, so it's still a concern. You know, I, for those reasons, you know, projected growth, I, I believe in the long run, it will save the company, the county money if we do it now instead of waiting and interest rates go up multiple times. It's building expenses, everything else goes up, plus the million of the, the bond issuance. So that's why I made the motion and I will support it tonight.
Yeah. Robert did, as I was...
Two seconds.
Uh, Michael Johnson. Mr. Roddy.
You know, we, we get emails that float around that, that criticize us from one thing to the next and, and bring up several issues. And, and the one that I, I can, I remember that, that went around here recently was talking about how we, in the last five years, some things hadn't been planned for. And when I think back, our chairman was, was talking about a new administration building several years ago. And we finally got around to looking at the capital facilities needs throughout the county. And what better time to package that with what we got going on now and considering the interest rates being low now? All the things that we have going on, it doesn't make sense to, to do a bond now, try to build all these projects, and then go back and put an admin building on the, on the, on the books to do because interest rates have been going up, costs have been going up. To try to issue a new bond, that costs. So when you start talking about being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, you put all those things in a pot. We, we will be saving money every step of the way by doing things now versus waiting because it's not like if we make a motion and pass it tonight, this building will be ready in six months. It's still gonna take time, and I, my best, I mean, I'm not even an expert in this, and I know we probably couldn't get this thing turned around in two years. From date, we would not be in a building in two years, a new administration building. So you talk about putting things off, if we waited another year and a half, two years, now you're talking four years. Interest rates in four years, what we have. Cost of building materials in four years, what we have. Prices are not going down. Interest rates are not going down. So when you talk about doing the right thing with the taxpayers' money, we're saving every step of the way by doing it now over two more years down the road, which will put us in a new building, hopefully in four years. You know, I think we were acting pretty swift on this part. Yeah, we, we had, you go back to five years ago when we talked about, in the same email, we brought on five new council members. The learning curve was steep. We've had a little bit more turnover. Now I think we're on the right track, we're moving in the right direction, we're addressing a lot of county needs, and yet still we're getting, still criticizing when we do address needs and we get criticized when we don't address needs. But I think being on the right side of this issue, to go ahead and, and do it now over, over the option of waiting, you know, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. And, and I think we're being good stewards and moving in the right direction. And if, if anyone's scared to take the heat of voting for this, I hope someone have mercy on your soul because it's the right thing to do tonight.
I'm just gonna go down the line, Ms. Cox.
When I ran for office and I knocked on doors, I said that I was gonna do three things. I said I was gonna be transparent. I was gonna do things differently. I was gonna tell people what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. I said that I was gonna spend their tax dollar like it was my own if it was in my budget. And I said that I would focus on their needs and not mine. And for that reason, I cannot vote for this, and I will not be voting for the bond referendum amount. And it has nothing to do with my concern for the admin building or that there might need to be some things that need to get done. My concern is the way we do it. How we do things and the process that we use is just as important as the conclusion that we reach. And in this case, we've done a disservice to the public. We have not put this to the public in a meaningful way, in a transparent way. What we need to remind ourselves is the people narrowly approved an $89 billion bond referendum, 58 percent. And that was because all of the people, and I loved the fact that we have, it had a huge diverse group that came together, folks that you would never see in a room together, who worked hard to get this bond referendum passed. And it was based upon us telling them, these are things that we need to get done, these are critical needs, the county stands by that. Nowhere in that bond referendum was the admin building. Why is that? What my understanding, and I believe if we're honest with ourselves, is that the people wouldn't pass it. They don't want to spend the money on it. They want to spend the money on the roads and the growth management, and we're not doing that. What I am also concerned about is that we are increasing taxes, and we keep saying it's a need, it's a need. We have to triage. Have we ever heard of triage? Just because you might want it or need it at some point doesn't mean you do it all now. I am very concerned that we're gonna overburden the taxpayers with all of the school bonds that have been issued, and I think the public has done a tremendous job coming out and supporting our community, supporting our schools, supporting what we need to do as a council. We have reached that maximum. We do not need to forget that 42 percent voted no, and it took a lot of effort to get 58 percent, and it's on an off-year election. Very few people showed up. This council has increased taxes, property taxes. During a reassessment year, we've had school bond referendums. We have attempted to, when the budget came up, what I tried to do and didn't even get a second was to figure out how do we get our admin building and how do we fund these additional people that we need that is because of the growth with the growth? Development and growth should pay for growth. We increased personnel over 20 people when we only had 16,000, increase in population in the unincorporated area. We decided to forego millions of dollars in tax revenue from the city under the TIF. When is this going to stop? This is government overspending, and it just, it just floors me that we are going to sit here and lump this in with a referendum and tie it to that because it taints the whole purpose of the admin building. There are definite renovations that need to be done. Do we have to spend $24 million to do it? No. Do we have to use $5 million of our capital reserve money to get this $24 million building done? No. We have not spent any or designated any of our capital reserves for what the people have asked us to spend it, spend it on, and that is roads. We have not done that. Don't misunderstand me. If we need to renovate our admin building, we need to vet it out. In January, we voted on where to put an admin building. We didn't vote on whether we should, what are the options? Should we go to McKelvey, that we just refurbished that and hold our meetings there? Can we get security here without having to redo the whole building? We didn't vet any of that. We did not have one meeting. We are going to spend $24 million, and I know that it's the will of council to move forward with this, but this is the wrong way to go about doing it, and I can't support it for that reason on principle.
Mr. Johnson. And Mr. Henderson, Williams, and I'll say my two cents, and then we vote.
I agree with some of the things Ms. Cox said. I think this council does have a propensity to raise taxes. I think when I made a motion to cut almost $900,000 out of the budget, six to 14 motions, I received two seconds, which was two more than you had gotten for your one, but only, so I didn't get a vote on most of my motions to cut it out. Certainly, we have a responsibility to save taxpayers' money. And so I'm going to ask county manager, is it correct that if we go forward today, that we will save $1 million by lumping this in versus delaying the building of the admin building?
I cannot answer the million dollars. That's not something that I have gotten. I do believe that if we move forward today, that we will save money because of interest rates and bringing, you know, opening it up, but I, the million, that's the first I heard that one.
Well, I thought I sat in the agenda meeting and, and heard that number said. And that's my concern as I sit here. You know, the, the question is, the email went out today, talked about, have we vetted this? Have we talked about it in public? I have to be honest, I've talked about this so many times, I don't know who I haven't told about this. I talk about it every time I go anywhere and they want to talk about buildings. I know I talked about it at least three HOA meetings with hundreds of people in the room over the past month. But the, one of the concerns that was brought up was, well, delay this, delay the admin building until you can show that you can contain cost on other buildings. And I don't have a problem with that, that, there is some logic to that. My, one of my arguments against that has been though, and that we, that there's a cost savings in moving forward today versus later. I even had thought, and it's mentioned it tonight, that I would, I would support going ahead and moving through with all of this, but holding these funds aside and letting them sit until we could show we could have some cost savings. But then when I mentioned that to someone, they immediately brought up, well, there's a carrying cost to this money. You sit on this money for 18 months, 24 months, there is a carrying cost, you're paying interest on this money, and I certainly appreciate that. My goal from day one of sitting here has been to try to save taxpayers' money. And so I guess what I'm looking is some reassurance, some factual reassurance, that by moving forward tonight, I'm actually gonna, not that I'm going to make thing, you know, that I'm going to save money for the taxpayer. So I guess that is my, my question, and could, do we have an answer to that?
Well, Mr. Roddy pointed out that he felt like Ms. Latham could answer that question, so he's gone to get her.
He said $24 million, $25 million by not, by not building it right now.
Excellent point.
But if you're gonna build it, and this is, and I don't think, if the question is, do we need a new admin building, then let's have that, that's a totally different discussion than having a discussion about how we're going to finance and how we're gonna save money long-term. If the, if the question is, does this building need to stay standing for another 10, 15 years, then certainly you can have that, you can have that belief. I, I for one don't believe that. I believe it's, this building has served its usefulness. It's time, it's time to bury this building and, and build another building. If you don't believe that, well, that's a totally, and I didn't hear you say that in your comments, Ms. Cox, what I heard was a lot of other reasons, mainly the openness of this. And I don't have a problem with this being an open, transparent process. I want everyone to understand what we did and why we did it. So here's Beth, lucky Beth.
Beth. Didn't we have an entire citizens committee that looked at capital needs and whether we needed this?
Well, that's, and I sat, and I, and I sat in on that committee, so I heard, I've heard this discussion so many times. That's why to me it's...
They decided not to put it on the referendum.
We, we're gonna, that's correct, they decided not to put it on the referendum.
My understanding is that it would save approximately $200,000 in issuance cost to group the, the two issues together in one. The main thing it would save is the issuance cost, and it would save an interest cost going forward as interest rates rise if you did it.
And you don't really have a ballpark assumption on that, do you?
Um, there's no, there's no way, there's no way to tell what interest rates will over the next two years.
You're not paying her enough if she does.
Yeah.
You're not paying enough anyway.
I never said I would be fair on all my questions.
So definitely $200,000 in issuance cost.
And then plus interest costs going up.
Yes.
I don't know if, well, never mind, I won't put you on the spot either.
And I'd like then to ask Cummings, put you all on the spot.
Okay, but then Michael will put you on the spot, so.
Can you quantify? And if you can't, you just need to say, I can't. But can you quantify a number in savings from building, starting building whenever your timeline says it could build, push that out another 18 months and then start, and then break ground?
Let me put it another way. Based on your construction knowledge and how things normally go, which is the only way you can do it, can you give some ballpark figure?
I can give you some percentages, you know, we can translate them roughly. We put together every quarter a localized forecast. And the reason why we do that is so that we can, keep that crystal ball as clear as possible. It gets pretty cloudy out here, too. But right now, we're tracking, four, five years ago, we were seeing escalation, 2 percent, two and a half percent. Now we're tracking three and a half, four percent year over year. So round numbers, that could translate to, if you just, you do the math right there, I was gonna say $847,000, but you need to use a construction development.
Not count her $200,000 she just pointed out.
So I, I mean, I think...
So that's maybe where the million came from that you heard.
I think it would be, it wouldn't be a difficult decision, it wouldn't be a difficult stretch to say that it potentially could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know, it wouldn't be comparable to say millions of dollars, but, you know, 18, a year, 18, again, it's very difficult to see. The, the problem we have with our market right now is labor. There will be people coming to the market, it's gonna continue to be, right now, the market's flooded, so.
And, well, never mind.
So you're saying that with all the projects that we have going on, we don't have enough people to do it? So the idea that we're gonna save time by adding on another project with the current bond, it doesn't seem to translate into really any savings. It's gonna take us...
It's kind of a loan sheet, if it's one you done, like you're doing one off, once you, you get people's attention when you get a big pot on, a lot of projects, and it's not...
Lower bidders.
...to use that as a, to get different contractors, larger contractors as well.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes, I, I just...
Him, sit down.
I, I just wanted to mention that, you know, we had to be severely regulated, I guess you'd say, when we were going to our different meetings in the different districts about the bond referendum and to let others, others do the presentation. And, but I was told, and I hope I am not cutting my throat when I say this, but folks, they, they, it made, it was made clear that if I talked to folks one-on-one, you know, I could speak my piece, but not absolutely promote it, but not absolutely, you know, not talk against it, whatever, but, you know, anyone that I talked to, and there were several, asked me, Bruce, what about, is there a lot of fluff in this? No. Back in 2000, was it 2004 is when the other one did not make it? Is that, is that about right?
There are six.
2006 or 2004?
Four or six.
Well, I don't know what all was involved with that, but all I know is we're renting a lot of stuff, and there's a lot of sweet deals and, you know, and all this kind of thing going on. And overall, this is, this is what is needed for sure and versus what all we believe and maybe have thought that we have saved. But everyone that I talked to, I told them exactly what was on there and what was not. And I told them clearly, this was not on there. And I, there was only, and I, I put my hand on Elvis Presley's CD. I'm just kidding.
Bruce.
I'm a big... Well, I'm just, I'm just a beast fan. All right, anyway, I'm just telling you that there was only maybe two that was absolutely adamantly against, that was vocal, vocalized to me to be against it as far as, because I told them exactly what, Christie, what you're concerned about. And, you know, so I, I was very, very open as to what we were having to do because the overall picture, the big picture was the fact that we were 15 to 20 years behind. And the fact that we needed to do it with, you know, exactly what was needed, not was wanted, and the interest rates and everything that where the cost of goods and services and labor and everything else was gonna be much higher at a later time, you know, but again, I, I don't, you know, I don't know why, but, you know, I have not been approached so strongly about that issue. So I, I, I feel like that, in my opinion, I feel like... So I, I, I feel like that, in my opinion, I feel like we do need to move forward.
Mr. Williams, and then I'll say my.
The, yeah, the, the question about need, which is actually what I guess we're talking about in here, that, it, during the whole process, the admin center, in my opinion, rose to the level of one of our highest needs. I don't think it was the, the highest need, but I think it was.
Second.
Was the highest need, was a high need. The, uh, whether to put it on the bond referendum, I personally think we could have. Uh, I think because of the failed referendum that Mr. Henderson just mentioned, there was some, some care, care and, and different projects got on there because of reasons and for whatever or not. This is a big need that had been, had been planned to be addressed all along. The transparency issue that, uh, Mr. Annico brought up is, is what, I guess is what to me is the biggest flaw here. I, uh, you know, he read it in the paper this morning, I read it in my packet Thursday. And I was like, you know, as much as we had it before, uh, you know, I felt we'd at least have a public hearing and, and, and go forward and was considering, uh, you know, whether to defer this or even defeat it because of that. Um, I, I, I reached out to, to a couple of people that I trust, and they didn't think it was near biggest deal as, as I did. One of them was, uh, on the bond committee, and the biggest thing that I remember was Paul standing up there saying, the GPS endorses it and, uh, but we think, we, we think that, that, uh, that you need to build the, uh, other projects before you do the admin. Now, I, I don't, I don't know if I'm one of the ones that was shaking your head and you thought I agreed with you. I, I definitely heard what you were saying, I did not agree with you at the time, maybe we should have had the, had the discussion, um, there. But, but I, but because of that, you know, one of the person on the bond committee said, no, the GPS is, they understand it and it's a need and it's not a done deal. Started to call Paul anyway, turns out it should have. But, yeah, at the, and, so now, when I started looking at deferring it, if we pull it out of the, the, the bond documents have already been prepared, we're saving money by doing it together, I understand that. We pull it out, our carry of interest for either one is gonna cost more money. You know, and if it could be deferred for two weeks and have a public hearing, um, I, I, I think that would, would be good. But the only reason would be to have a public hearing, and, and we, we've, we've heard some, from, from public tonight. I do, at the end of the, this decision to, to me is, I mean, the building is necessary and the, uh, and we need to move forward with the, with the bonding, uh, so I, um, I'm gonna support it. But I do definitely have concerns with the transparency and wish we could have done that better.
Well, and I've, uh, I, I'm, I'm kinda pooped, so I'm not gonna really add anything to it. You know, it's been talked about a lot, I mean, back years ago with the original council members, bump included, Bruce being told by the, with me pushing business so hard, the commerce department saying, you know, y'all are in the dark ages with your, you know, how does that impress corporations and stuff? And then legislative delegation members, the chairman of it, the senator, and all others is screaming at me about how, uh, back in times we are, the inefficiencies, the cost on old rental buildings, all the issues. I mean, I responded to an email from Paul today and put in some thoughts there about why I felt like it was necessary. Um, I, and I, Mr. Johnson beat me to the point, the one point I was gonna make. Either, if we're gonna say, no, we don't wanna build the building, fine, no problem. But if we say we're gonna build the building, let's go ahead and do it the most efficient, timely way to save the taxpayer money.
We have robbed the public of the opportunity to come and comment and to give suggestions. That's what we've done. We've robbed them of their opportunity to do that. And when we say we don't have transparency, that is where we don't get all of the information to be able to vet this question out. And that is becoming more and more on this council.
That being said, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Next item. Let me make sure I got my pages right. Bill wants to, can I believe, oh, you're not?
It's, it's just giving you an update of, of scheduled events with, with the buildings, um, and the bond. And, um, November two thousand fifteen, the referendum was.
Bill, let me ask you a question, Paul, before Paul leaves, Paul, Paul. I, I wanna say this, cause I wanna ask you this question, as I read this, what we have is we have an ordinance that's coming up on number three, which is the first reading, reading of the ordinance, which is simply the, the spelling out of the numbers. Certainly there will be a public hearing on that and two more additional readings, correct? So it will give the public some time to give input on whether or not we should issue bonds up to a hundred and eight million dollars.
And the primary focus of that public hearing is on the eight percent, uh, cap versus the referendum, which has already been approved.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that there, there, while it's not what obviously some would want, there is, there is going to be an opportunity for something to happen.
Right.
Just one quick question, could you find out how much it's gonna cost?
You're, you're out of order. Uh, Bill, go ahead.
He just wanted you to hear a comment.
Just want you to listen, I don't want to, the public out there.
November two thousand fifteen, uh, the referendum was approved. Uh, November two thousand fifteen, draft bond and building calendars were prepared. Uh, December seventh, two thousand fifteenth, recommended first reading of the bond ordinance. December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen would be recommended second reading and public hearing of bond ordinance. Council considera, uh, council consideration of architectural contracts. January fourth will be recommend third reading of bond ordinance. Uh, January eighteenth through twenty-second calls with rating agencies. Uh, February tenth, two thousand and sixteen, price bonds via competitive sales. And February twenty-fifth will be the closing date. In reference to the construction schedule, you all were, as part of the package, you all got a, a scheduled events for each of the, excuse me, each of the buildings. And real quickly, April two thousand and seventeen will, will be occupancy, will be the date the building, the recycling center is done. February two thousand seventeen, Fort Mill magistrate, uh, March two thousand seventeenth, public works office. May two thousand seventeenth, clover magistrate. July two thousand seventeen will be the road maintenance facility, the building maintenance facility, the equipment maintenance facility. Uh, March two thousand and eighteen will be the new family court facility. Uh, May two thousand and eighteen will be the administration building and the expansion of the Moss Justice Center. August two thousand eighteen will be renovated heckle complex. And September two thousand eighteen would be the renovated Moss Justice Center. And of course, things happen as, as you're going through the process, and if, if there are any changes, you will be updated as soon as we find out about the changes.
Any questions for Bill? Yes, sir.
Just one quick one on what was, the, the request of GPS was that we not build until we show that there is savings on these other buildings, which means we were talking about one year with Cummings' estimates of the cost. But we're talking about these buildings not being done till two thousand eighteen if we waited to prove savings. So we're talking tripling their estimate of savings if we wait three years instead of, or costs, instead of one year, so.
And here again, I think it gets down, are, are we gonna build it or not? If we're, if we're gonna build it, let's do it the most cost-effective way, that's the bottom, bottom line. Thank you.
I think we should rent, we should look at all of the options, which we haven't done. We haven't looked at renovations, we haven't looked at different cost, all we looked at was where to put it. And that was exactly the point back in January.
Actually, before you got on count.
No, if we're talking about that boomerang study, we all know that that wasn't appropriate.
Oh, no, that was, that was triggered by all these other earlier discussions. That's, that was just triggered from, yes, sir.
Why should we sink money into a fifty-year-old building?
I live in a hundred-year-old home, and.
You had a public not in your house either.
But you can save money, I mean, that, that to me is, we have schools that are a lot older. We can, we, is this something that we need right this minute? No, and we've already put a huge burden on the taxpayers. And the group that put this to the, um, the referendum study, group said, do not put this on there. Do not mix this with the referendum, and that's exactly what has happened.
The chairman of that committee did say that they, he believed that that was the biggest mistake that committee made.
Well, well, it wasn't put to the public, and it was fifty-eight percent.
Well, let, let's, let's move on, we got a lot to cover here. Uh, next item, count, uh, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to provide for the issuance and sale of a hundred and eight million nine hundred thousand general obligation bonds of two thousand and sixteen of York County, South Carolina, to prescribe the purposes for which the proceeds shall be expended to provide for the payment thereof and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ne, did you get that? Next item, council to consider approval of the two thousand and sixteen York County Council meetings calendar.
Move to approve.
And here, second.
Second.
Discussion.
When I, when I look at this, it says, note that spring break for all school districts is April fourth through April eighth. And then you're scheduling us a meeting on April the fourth?
Yeah, so if we wanna change it, we can, that's.
All right, well, I said, that's not the spring break for four million, so. Spring break in Fort Mill ends on April the third, so I'm for that date, I just don't know.
I'm for this date too, cause I'll be out of the country, well, out of the state.
Out of the country.
Out of the country, but out of the state.
In years where there's been five meet, five week, weeks in the month of April, it's been easy to change it, uh, that didn't work out this year. But, thanks for putting it on there, cause that's, uh, that's what, that's what happened one year, one, one year, we moved it to Thursday at the last minute, which was completely inefficient.
That was not during my time.
Yes, it was.
No help here.
Oh, no, then it wasn't.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other comments, suggestions? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, consider first reading of by title only of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of fee in lieu of tax agreement and infrastructure finance agreement by and between York County and Project Eagle, the codename for certain limited liability companies and/or corporations with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and such companies and/or corporations will receive certain infrastructure credits in respect of investment in related infrastructure and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second, discussion.
I wanna commend.
Mr. Johnson.
I wanna commend, one of the things I've been looking at in a lot of these fees and lose lately is salary. What, what, you know, we're, we're giving you a fairly substantial tax break typically, we're giving it to you for an extended period of time. And the question to me is, how many jobs are you creating and at what salary level are those jobs? This is fifty-nine dollars an hour.
Yeah, where do you apply?
Almost over thirty jobs, I mean, this, this is, when I see us give them at some of the minimum wage scales that I see occasionally, the, those jobs are needed, we need a mix of jobs in York County. But this, this is good, this is good economic development, and, uh, I, I certainly support this.
Good point. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, next item. Consider adoption of a resolution identifying and inducing a proposed investment by Harold Industries Incorporated and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, next item. Uh, consider approval of a resolution to designate the following roadways as a no-through truck route. Hall Spencer Road from Collins Road to Anderson Road, Harmony Road from Collins Road to Neely's Creek Road, Berenger Road from Mount Holly Road to Neely's Creek Road, Neely's Creek Road from Mount Holly Road to Fire Tower Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, next item, council to consider approval of a request to rename a non-contiguous, contin, contin.
Contiguous.
Contiguous, sorry, section of Brickyard Road, South Carolina, forty-six thirty, three twenty-nine to Grattan Village Court.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, next item, council to consider award of bid number twenty-three, twenty-three thirteen for the purchase of a new sanitary landfill compactor to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder, Road Machinery Services Incorporated of Statesville, North Carolina, for the total cost of six hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, next item. Council to consider approving the Penny's Three Programs Project, US three twenty-one, Johnson Street, Railroad Avenue intersection and the Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Ross Cannon Street intersection, the city of York to Hux and Associates, PC and a not, not to extend, exceed amount of fifty-six thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, next item, council to consider authorizing the expenditure of up to twenty-seven thousand dollars in York County Forever Commission Funds to Nation Ford Land Trust for stewardship, appraisal, and administrative fees for the placement of a conservation easement on approximately fifty-eight acres located at Highway three twenty-two, Rock Hill Community owned by Jack and Ann Roddy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay, Mr. Roddy.
I was able to meet, um, my, uh, my appointee to the York, for the York County Forever, as well as Bobby Walker and I think, uh, Lindsay was there. And Jack really went over some of the history of the, of the property, and the reason why they're wanting to do, um, the easement is to, for the conservation purpose of it. He said he's been offered several times from, um, developers to come in and buy the property. He doesn't wanna see it develop, uh, cause he recognizes, uh, all the growth that's going on here in York County, as well as Rock Hill. And he's just wanting to, uh, do the right thing and basically, um, keep this land forever being developed. And I think for the cost that it, that, uh, would go through York County Forever Funds, it's a minimal cost of, of being able to do this. If we tried to purchase this land on the open market, we couldn't do it for twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars. You know, you're talking about, what, fifty-eight, fifty, fifty-seven, fifty-eight acres, uh, just outside of Rock Hill. I think we'll, this is kinda, this kinda fulfills the mission of York County Forever to, to acquire this type of property and close, in this proximity, uh, within the, the city limits, and it's, is very easily accessible. He even told us that the kids were, were concerned about not being able to get the property for, for, they want to put it into, um, this conservation easement. So I think this should really be a, a good acquisition, uh, thanks to the, the good works of York County Forever and its committee members. It's a real prime piece of property that, that really meets what York County Forever sets out to do. So hopefully, uh, everyone read over and will support it.
Mr. Winkler.
All right, um, you know, we, we hear a lot, and when we had the land use meetings and, you know, one of the things that Audrey kept telling us was, you know, people want more parks, more public space, more open space, that kinda thing. You know, Rock Hill's growing like crazy, and at this point, I plan on supporting this expenditure, but I do want to go on record to say I would like Nations Ford Land Trust, York County Forever, our county attorney, whoever else needs to, to look at when we do these conservation easements. I have an issue with the fact that we tie up fifty-eight acres and we don't allow a single one of our citizens to go onto that property or do anything with it. It, it's not a park, it is a museum. It's a preservation of that property so that it cannot be developed. But when we put an easement on these properties, they're not, you know, we can't, the public can't go use them. They're not a, a public park, they're none of that stuff. It's just a, basically a museum that this is, this is an important property, it's a very old property, but, you know, um, the gentleman that owns it can allow people to come if he wants, but it is not public park property, which is something we hear from our citizens that they want all the time. And these easements do not do that.
Any other comments, suggestions?
Thank you, Janet. I think this, I think this is exactly the purpose of this, this program, and I understand Councilman Winkler's point, but I think we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to purchase it, we're talking about green space use here and not park. If we're talking about park, it would be significantly more. And I, and I appreciate the Roddys for being willing to put the property in this, and, and thank you for putting that.
Sorry, don't get me wrong, I, I agree, we couldn't have purchased it. I'd just like us to look at the easements and see if there's a way we could allow the public to use some portion of these things when we do this.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, council to consider the recommended fees for DNA lab requests for the sheriff's office, for the sheriff's office.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, council to consider the sheriff's office request for authorization to apply for and accept, if awarded, a Palmetto Pride grant in the amount of $4,919.95, no local match required.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, request authorization from council for York Technical College to acquire properties on Trimno Lane in Rock Hill, and to acknowledge future decreases in tax revenues related to the acquisition.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I just wonder what, what York Tech people did, why they at the end. They hung in all night.
Oh.
Hung in all night. They, yeah, we put them at the end, but.
Okay. I didn't know what you were talking about for a minute.
We don't mind, they serve also.
Any other comments? Question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, council to consider ratifying grant application and authorizing acceptance, if awarded, of a grant applied for on behalf of the Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $50,000. Matching funds equalling any grant award amount are available in the CVB budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Henderson.
Is this basically a pass through?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I'll see.
Questions? Question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, council to consider approving a rep.
Revokeable.
Thank you. License to use property by Dorn Veterans Affairs Medical Center, subject to final approval by the county attorney.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a motion on consent?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Committee reports, Pennies for Progress, Ms. Kristy Cox is the chairperson.
I have to say a big thank you to our county manager, Andalisa, and Iran, and the folks in the Transportation Department. They did a fantastic job of coming up with the agenda for the first commission meeting, planning PFP. I'm getting your disease, I'm sitting next to you.
I'm sorry.
PFP commission meeting, which will be on December 9th. We're excited about getting that moving and going forward. And what I'm particularly excited about is making sure, and our county manager suggested this, instead of it being just around where folks can discuss a project that they want to get done, or a pet project, we're actually going to have meetings set up and designated times for the folks that we think are important to bring information to this group so that they can hear information and not, and not just make their decisions in a vacuum. And they came up with, with a specific list of, of folks, and probably what I'll do is circulate that to the rest of you if you see any omissions and get a, get a plan for getting those meetings set up. We also discussed update of the projects, which there was information provided, and I will, if we can make sure that all of the council were given that, just so they're updated on that. And we agreed to create unanimous approval, to create an ad hoc citizen committee that will take, take a look at some of how we've conducted business in the past, how we can improve it, and maybe look at helping coordinate meetings to introduce a maintenance component or component that deals with county roads. Very pleased with that meeting. I thought very.
Yeah, I'm looking at your list, I'm very impressed, that's very smart. Next committee, Finance and Operations Chairman Michael Johnson.
Finance and Operations Committee met tonight at 5:00. We approved Stephanie Hallman for Keep York County Beautiful, Penny Shepherd for the Cultural and Heritage Commission. We made no action on the planning commission.
What district was it?
We approved, it's at large. We approved Jason LaBarge for the Rock Hill York County CVB, and Alexandria Esposito for the Catawba Mental Health Board. We discussed term limits on the York County Natural Gas Board, but we agreed to bring that back up as we are reviewing all boards and commissions during the year of 2016, probably. There's 37 of them. We're going to try to take about three of, three every so often, and, and just look at them to see what they're doing. There are some that, there's not a single person sitting on the board or commission. It's empty, there's no chair, there's nothing going on, hasn't happened in years, and we're going to try to bring some recommendations back to either do away with those, or condense them, or try to get them back up and running. And lastly, we discussed the ordinance regarding conflicts and requiring people to give those conflicts. We will pass something out at our December 21 meeting, and it is actually, second reading will be on the agenda at the December 21 meeting.
With the York County Natural Gas Board, was there any discussion about the inequities of appointed bodies having different links?
Bruce, yes, Bruce brought them up. Bruce had it, and Bruce had certainly had some proposals to extend the terms, but he graciously agreed to allow us to talk about that in January.
Okay. Good enough. Next item, council member non-agenda comments. Any council member have anything to discuss?
I just have one brief thing. I've, I've been asked if on, in this reassessment year, if the reassessment numbers had come in from the areas of the TIF yet, and I couldn't answer that. So I put that out there and make sure I get a response back. Thank you.
Any other council? Yes, or Mr. Brown?
Real quick, to those of you who are on the Public Works Committee, we're going to try to have a meeting. David mentioned that we probably need to get together to address a couple of things. Now, there's some time coming up before Christmas, so we'll try to see if we can grab a little quick meeting. So just putting everybody on notice who's on that committee.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Henderson.
I don't see anyone, but maybe somebody can help me in here. I'm wanting to find out about the Penny's for Progress and the status of 557. Is that, is that doable anytime soon? Does anybody know?
I think we.
I guess I'll find out later.
Yeah, we can take that up.
I know it was being worked on not too long ago, though.
What's this say? Does that say anything?
Uh, no. No other comments? Okay. Next item would be, I need a motion for executive session.
May we go into the executive session to discuss a proposed contractual matter, York County Project Number 1501, and receive legal advice?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.